Also as a backup.
Great, great, thank you.
Alright, we're going live. This meeting is compliant with the Governor's Executive Order N-2920 issued on March 17, 2020, allowing for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide a safest environment for staff, council members, and the public while allowing for public participation. Public may address the council using exclusively remote public comments options. To address the council, the City Council meeting will be an exclusively virtual meeting. The City Council agenda materials may be viewed online at www.brisbane.ca.org at least 24 hours prior to a special meeting and at least 72 hours prior to a regular meeting. Remote public comments. Meeting participants are encouraged to submit the public comments in writing in advance of the meeting. The following email and text line will be monitored during the meeting and public comments received will be read into the record during oral communications 1 and 2 or during an item. Please email ipedia@brisbaneca.org or text 628-219-2922. Again, that's 628-219-2922. For oral comments for the public hearing only, please dial 1-669-900-9128 with the meeting ID 94909342990. Public meetings can be viewed live and/or on-demand via the city's YouTube channel, www.youtube.com/brisbaneca, or in Comcast Channel 27. Archived videos can be replayed on the city's website via the All Meetings page, http/brisbaneca.org/meeting. If you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk at 415-508-2113. Notification in advance of the meeting will enable the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting.
Thank you. I would like to say that on the online and in the packet, the phone number for to call in for oral comments on the public hearing was missing a digit. So if you could just repeat that phone number for the public and say it slowly along with the meeting ID, I'd appreciate that, Ingrid.
Sure. The oral comments for the public hearing phone number is 1-669-900-9128. And the meeting ID is 94909342990.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Ingrid, is there a chance you might be able to just to print that on a piece of paper and kind of post your corner there on your camera where it's seen? You know what I mean?
Oh, it'll be posted on the slide during the council meeting on the cable channel.
Okay.
Great, thank you. That brings us to the Joint City Council and Housing Authority Meeting of Thursday, September 3, 2020. Roll call to order, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Present.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Here, thank you. And with that, will you join in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Could we have a report out from closed session, please?
Also, Madam, in closed session, and gave direction on two claims and received a report on potential litigation involving Icefield Rail.
Thank you. So that moves us to adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Lentz and seconded by Councilmember Cunningham. Roll call vote, please.
Member Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye, thank you. So that brings us to presentations and awards. The first presentation is for National Preparedness Month, and I have a proclamation. So, National Preparedness Month, whereas during September, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and the National Preparedness Month Coalition urge all Americans to take some simple steps to make their families better prepared for emergencies. And whereas with the COVID-19 pandemic of 2020, the rich-pressed earthquakes of 2019, the Paradise Fire storms of 2018, the Loma Prieta earthquake of 1989, and yearly winter storms in our country, all will continue to have devastating effects on the people and the economy. And whereas the loss of life and property can be greatly reduced if appropriate preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a disaster. And whereas these lifesaving procedures will be highlighted during the month of September as the North County Fire Authority, City Emergency Services, and other service organizations provide disaster preparedness information to Brisbane residents. And whereas the community should take steps to help them before a disaster strikes, including making a kit, having a plan, being informed, and getting involved. And whereas it is highly recommended that our citizens become involved by participating in earthquake preparedness classes and the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT program. And whereas this important safety information should be studied and observed throughout the year in order to reduce injuries, loss of life, and property damage in the event of a disaster. And now therefore I, Terry O'Connell, Mayor of the City of Brisbane, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as National Preparedness Month and encourage all Brisbane residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to follow before, during, and after a disaster. So with that, do we have any comments from our fire authority? I'll present it to you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. First of all, let me introduce myself. My name is Joel Abelson. I'm a Thai chief in charge of disaster preparedness. My fourth week, however, since the last two weeks prior to this one in Salinas dealing with their emergency, with many of your Brisbane firefighters. So we got to see firsthand what was going on there and how thin our resources are right now. It had been that we were to have another type of event outside of fires during this fire season. I can only imagine, you know, how thin our resources are going to be. So I was trying to think when I was preparing for tonight, you know, what words of wisdom I can give you as far as that goes. I was kind of thinking, you know, we all kind of, you know, we look at different steps. There's a lot of resources out there as far as the, you know, Department of Homeland Security, I've been to ready.gov. You know, you can go there, you can research it real quick, get internet, and it'll give you kind of a quick breakdown. They always kind of, you know, the first thing everybody kind of thinks about is your home kit. You know, well, I think right now with the, you know, the current situation, the pandemic, most people have already kind of addressed that. And so I would encourage you to actually maybe look beyond that first step. And the thing that a lot of people may have home kits, but they're not necessarily home with plans. You know, try to figure out what's going to happen in an emergency. You know, if you lose your cell phone, if you lose your coverage, you know, if you can't, you know, if you lose your home, where are you going to go? What type of things are you going to, if you have to leave your house, you know, and within hour or two notice, what are you going to grab? Things like that. And also, you know, we can, in this setting, you know, we're not going to get a lot of people, there's only so much participation in council meetings, but I would encourage people using the social media to share your experiences, things that maybe you didn't think about, maybe your challenges. We can go, hey, I, you know, I thought, everybody thinks about water, everybody thinks about some type of meal thing, but you know, what are the things that you didn't think about? And share that, you know, through your social media contacts, through your family and friends, you know, and go in that little extra step, do something a little bit different that maybe you've done in the past. Because you'd be surprised, you know, it's not just, as far as resources goes, the more that we can prepare for this stuff, the more allows us to really do our job, better job at saving the extra things that we may not be able to do if we're really doing the bigger things. And so we want to be, provide that service to you guys, support you guys get to help yourself, help your neighbors, the more we can do for you as well. And think about, think about your friends, think about your neighbors, you know, the person next door that maybe doesn't have the family, doesn't have, you know, maybe a little bit older, doesn't, you know, not used to the internet, things like that. So those are just some kind of thoughts I had, and we'll continue to push information out as we, you know, as we can, run anything, try to share our experiences that we see, you know, going to these events, you know, happening throughout the state, and hopefully never happens here, but hopefully we're prepared if it does. So thank you very much for having me, and if you have any questions, I feel free to answer them. And I also encourage you guys, encourage people out there, if you see firefighters out in the streets, we love talking to people, you know, so if you have any type of question, please come up to us, get to know us. We're here to help, we all, we're in this profession for a reason, and so don't be, you know, you're not bothering us, we're here to serve you. We're very social people, so feel free to contact us, but thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Joel, for all of your, you know, hard work and those of your buddies, you know, who are on the front lines and, yeah, this, you know, if we didn't have you guys doing the work that you do, we could be in some serious, yeah, some serious problems. I mean, there's already a lot going on, and the way you guys handled the fires during the pandemic was so amazing and admirable.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, very grateful. Terry, you're muted.
There we go. So that moves us to item B, which is an update on action taken on the Housing Authority Meeting of July 28, 2020 regarding 1 San Bruno Unit D, and this is an informational item that staff will be presenting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On July 28, the council members met in your role as the Brisbane Housing Authority. You provided direction in open session with regards to 1 San Bruno Unit D, a unit that the city had purchased, had originally been in a first-time homebuyer's program after efforts to sell it as a first-time homeowner's program, rent or unit. We removed it from that program and sold it at market rate. We had an opportunity, an offer that came in in late July, and we brought it to the Housing Authority to review. The Council Authority gave the staff the direction to move forward to close on the sale, which we did for $640,000. The escrow was closed on August 11. The net profit to the housing fund was in the neighborhood of $80,000 to $85,000. Those funds will be part of the balance of the housing fund, which now has about $4 million in it and is growing from some other sources, and will be used for affordable housing programs in the city in the future.
Thank you, and I did want to mention that I had been contacted by a member of the public who had concerns on this. I do think that because of the limitations of the properties and being, the property and being able to be sold under that program, that the council acted in the most prudent way that they could and acted to protect the housing fund and do what was best under those circumstances. I was asked if I would do an appeal of that sale, and I don't believe that would be the right, to go, you know, the right way to go down this road. And we had gone too far in the escrow to make that even really a feasible task. But I do really appreciate the public reaching out to me, and do we, we did have a letter about that, and is that something that we want to address at this time, Ingrid?
Yes, I'd like you to read. This is correspondence from Dana Dilworth. "I'm having computer problems, so will comment via email. You know, I am unable to comment via the routine call-in system, I have, as I have a low-income phone line, but does not dial outside of the 415 area code. This could be an issue for others. I have been told to be grateful. I am grateful for the laws that require municipalities to serve all members of their community. I am grateful for the folks that find a way to make their programs work in the interest of the public. I am grateful for results, not for effort. The sale of 1 San Bruno, when announced on 6/18/20, was merely spoken of as took direction on the items, closed session portions of the meeting. There was no indication that there was an impending sale, nor that the city was not able to meet its low-income housing obligations. All subsequent council meetings were canceled until 9/3/20, or so it seems. Out of the blue, 7/24/20, 4:49 PM less than one business day, there was a closed-session special meeting for the Housing Authority announced for 7/28/20 at 6:00 PM. Ingrid is aware that I had problems with accessing agenda items on the internet. A citizen helped me, letting me know that there's a new system that you would have to go on to one page where the blue items show up and click on them. During the meeting, the only information I could seek out to the council, or eke out to the council, is a cryptic message to reserve their right to appeal, which the council ignored and imposed haste past the item. I asked for public records, which she denied access to within the 30-day appeal period. I asked council members to rescind the motion. When those avenues failed, I asked Ingrid about the fee to appeal. I was told there was no item to appeal, it was sold. This is unconstitutional. Citizens have the right to referendum and appeal, both state and federal statutes. I recognize that this is embarrassing, that you accepted a 10-day close in error. I ask that the council correct the perception that they can hash out the sales of our public assets in closed sessions and have no appeal process available. I ask you to agendize this matter immediately. In reality, you have had over two years to make this sale happen. In spite of the efforts, Ms. Jessica Lacus, she didn't meet our goal. I find your effort of FB and next-door posting to be insufficient, and you have yet to provide a mailing list that would have ensured success. As a teacher, I am upset. I know teachers leaving Jefferson Union because they haven't been able to achieve the American dream. You didn't reach out to them or anyone else in the low-income community, for that matter. No, during a pandemic, you posted the property on 6/30/20 and accepted a non-qualifying deal by 7/28 for $100,000 to $150,000 below market value. Don't want to throw shade, but I don't believe that you thought this out, and respectfully ask that you review your actions. I also ask that you query the town as to what types of support for low-income housing they would like to see. That way, it looks, the way it looks, we're going to only end up with rentals, and if Councilwoman Lynn gets his way, we'll give our resources away to another community. Sincerely, Dana Dilworth."
Thank you. Does staff have any comments on this matter?
The only thing I would say is that we've been working with your council subcommittee, which has provided direction to me, that I, that I will be working with city staff to do kind of a comprehensive review of our affordable housing options, and that is something that we'll work with the subcommittee and then probably bring a full report sometime in calendar 2021.
And as a side note, I believe there is another unit at 1 San Bruno that also has some market restrictions that is or will be coming on the market soon, and to give notice to the public that that is something that they can inquire to our city clerk in regards to what that program may be. It is not something, an asset that's owned by the city, but it is something that's in the control of our housing authority, per view, correct?
Correct. It was a, what is referred to as a below-market-rate unit, and that was per ordinance that was at 1 San Bruno. Any inquiry into the city clerk should get you connected with the right staff person, who in this case would be Julia Ayers, who will oversee that program, and we'd be glad to do that. We're doing a number of other things to do outreach on that, but that unit is available at a BMR rate.
Thank you. And does, does council have any other questions or comments?
I have none.
I have one. I just wanted to state for the record that I was also approached, and a conversation was had about filing an appeal, and I expressed an unwillingness to do so.
Thank you. Clerk, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I said I have nothing to say.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear all of it. Any other comments from, from council?
I have none.
None.
Thank you so much. We'll move on then to oral communications, number one. City clerk, is there any members of the public who are wishing to speak or have submitted written comments?
Checking my text messages and my emails. No member of the public wish to speak at this time.
Thank you so much. That moves us to the consent calendar. And do I have a motion to approve items C through O?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove item I, please.
Okay. Any other council members wishing to remove an item?
I also have, Mayor, for item O, I have a public comment, so whenever you'd like to hear that.
Okay, so we should remove that.
I'll make a motion to approve item C, D, E, F, G, H, J, K, M, N.
I can't.
And that's a second motion by Councilmember Conway, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Member Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Senator Beverly Lynn?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye, thank you. Item I, which is to reject all bids for the Guadalupe Channel erosion control project, Councilmember Lentz, you wanted that removed? Like, kick off your questions.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you know, reading the staff report, I can see why, you know, we were putting this item on hold and not moving forward with any of the contractors for the job, but it's interesting how the bids were significantly higher. The lowest bid was, it looks like it was over $400,000 more than the engineer's estimate. I know Fish and Wildlife has also put on an additional requirement. So I'm just, I know this was an item that was important to some folks, including the person who submitted the last letter that was read by the city clerk, Dana Dilworth. So, yeah, if you could just shine some additional light on that for us, that'd be great.
Sure, I guess I'll take a first shot at it before you third. So the good news is that we had a very productive phone conversation this morning with the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the folks in Regional Water Quality Control Board. We think we've an alternate plan going forward that is going to satisfy Fish and Wildlife, take away their concerns that they had previously, that we didn't have appropriate mitigation on the banks. We do have some more preliminary work we have to do on the project. We do have some more preliminary work we have to do on the project. Instead of some of the more intensive armoring that we were planning on doing on the channel of banks, we are now proposing to lay the banks back significantly so that we can get more conveyance capacity through the channel and have less opportunity for erosion. But we've got to go out and check the soil. This is the area that where we'd be laying back the banks are south of the fire station. It's where the city's been using a large portion of that area as a storage yard for our construction projects. We need to go out and ascertain where that area is, get some grab samples, and make sure we understand what we're doing, what we're going to be dealing with there. Because the problem is, if we find contaminated soil, it's going to be very, very expensive to remove, and we're going to have to come up with another design. So we're hoping that we're going to have good results from that, and we're hoping that we'll have another nine foot forward so that we can do this next season. It's very unfortunate, we tried to get it done this season, so we're just going to have to hope that we don't have any erosion issues where that channel joins Bayshore Boulevard. Do you have any other questions for myself?
Yeah, I do, Randy. So, so it sounds like you're kind of in a wait-and-see situation, you need to evaluate the conditions on the ground before you can come up with an estimate that you think is appropriate for this project.
Absolutely, and maybe even have to come up with an alternative design, sir. I don't think we're going to find anything contaminated there. We're not going to know until we go out and get a handful of samples and send them over to the laboratory. Because if I go out there and I find out it's all bunker C and VOCs underlying that ground, to take it out, I'm going to have to take it to a special rental, and it's hundreds and hundreds of miles away, it's going to be an incredible effort, or we might have to look to another design. So we're giving our fingers crossed that we'll get good results.
All right. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you. And then item O, which is to ratify the agreement between the city and the Friends of the Brisbane Library, and proceed to eyes for the design and installation of public art, a mural, at the new Brisbane Library. And we have a public comment on that, so we removed it from consent calendar. Would you like to proceed with that?
I will, Madam Mayor, thank you. This is from Dana Dilworth. As an art teacher and ceramic artist, I'm happy to see us working with Proceda Eyes. I worked with Mission Cultural Center in their MAS summer program almost 20 years ago. Proceda Eyes has an honored place in creating dynamic murals telling the stories of our ancestors. I appreciate the effort, but also have some feedback. This project reminds me of two things, a mural we already have, and the first project teachers use to create life storyboards. You pass around magazines and let the beavers sniff and glue until they fill the page. I see there is room for tweaking, Exhibit D. Sometimes you begin with a brainstorming session, perhaps it's past. It seems this is only about the library. There are some very pivotal images missing. Tree lighting and caroling is one. While there's a mention of the stars tucked in a corner, in Brisbane they glow, it defines us. We stand out as a community. I would think that can be enhanced. Halloween costume photos as a symbol of our community and a safe environment, ways we support our youth. After-school computer use and 3D printer program niche show what the library has to offer. Another contribution from the Friends is our biannual garage sale. A stream of out-of-town cars coming down Bayshore in visitation with quote-unquote "junk" hanging out of them upon exit could fit the bill. I find something unsettling about the date draped on the birds, they look like diapers. I find the Aloney reference to be trite, almost offensive. Since the library represents an archive, stewardship of the written word, perhaps there's another image, or series of images, that the library has been the repository of the printed word, the magnetic word, and now the digital word. If you want to repeat the music note to digital pixel metaphor, this is a chance. As to Aloney image, I bet they taught the children basket reading. It's also not clear what percentage is tilework and to what degree there is community participation. There are at least three ceramic artists in town that may have buckets of ceramic shards and glazed test chips waiting for this kind of event. Being a town which has recycling goals, I would think it should contain some local material. Perhaps an October 30th timeline is a little too soon, but I have faith and appreciate your efforts to date. Respectfully, Dana Dilworth.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this item?
There's not, Madam Mayor.
I thought there were good comments. Thank you, Dana.
There is a comment regarding, back to item I.
Oh, okay. Let's get through this item, and then we can go back to item I.
Okay.
If we need to, if that's possible.
We haven't approved it yet, so.
Haven't taken an action.
Okay. Let's finish this item, and then we can go back to item I. So, council discussion?
You know, I have, I do have a question, Madam Mayor. So, you know, this is before, so that we can get it, you know, so we can move forward in a timely manner, just because of the construction constraints of what's happening at the library? Is the, is the final design now set? No more feedback is being taken? The artist is, got their direction and they're moving forward with it?
That is correct.
And is there any comment from staff on what the feedback process was and the public participation?
Sure, we did have a meeting a couple weeks ago that involved a couple council members and staff, and the artist, as well as the members of the Friends of the Brisbane Library. And then we did, I think, also circulate the proposed artwork to council members. We did receive some impact put on that. The Friends of the Brisbane Library process was a very inclusive one, as I understand it. They reached out to a number of people in the community to participate. This is a, you know, a little bit unique situation in that our role, we obviously own the building, and therefore they needed to, you know, get permission from us to place the artwork there. But they did all the fundraising, and they selected the artists, and it's really their project. So we have a little bit of a hands, won't say hands-off, but a little bit of a distance in terms of a relationship. This is not like art that would go through our public arts process, where there's a little bit more hands-on. So it's just a little nuance in the, in the process.
I understand. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, are there any other comments from the public?
Yes, I got a text message, and the message about O is, on item O, it would be good to really bet this. The mural that was proposed for the skate park had an invasive species featured.
Where do we know who sent that?
This is from Michelle Salmon.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I believe that staff has said why we cannot be overly hands-on on this process. So if there's any council members who would like, a council member who would like to make a motion to approve item O?
I will make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
And a second.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Lent. And then roll call vote.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lent?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye, thank you. And then we can go back to item I regarding the Guadalupe Channel Erosion Control Project. And you had a public comment?
The public comment regarding this is, how will the plans for HSR affect item I? That is a concern. That's also from Michelle Salmon.
Does staff have any comments on that?
At present, I'm not aware of any conflict between their plans and the proposed changes at the channel.
Thank you. And with that, would we entertain a motion to approve item I to reject all bids?
Aye.
By Councilmember Lent, and a second?
Okay, I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cunningham, roll call vote.
Member Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lent?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye, thank you. So that moves us to public hearings, item P, which is the appeal of the grading review at 338 Kings Road. Permit EX-4-19, or I should say, Appeal EX-4-19. And staff report, please.
Oh, yes, thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. Julia Ayers, senior planner, will be presenting the report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just going to share my screen. So the matter before you tonight is an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a grading application at 338 Kings Road. Just a little background on this project. The Planning Commission first considered an application for this property in February this year. The February 27th project plans are included as an attachment to your staff report. At that hearing, the Planning Commission voted to deny the application due to its proposal to remove an adjacent coast live oak street tree. However, because no findings of denial were adopted, final action on the application was deferred to their next regular meeting. So at that May 14th meeting, the Planning Commission instead considered and granted a request from the applicant to reconsider revised project plans that address the commission's concerns regarding the street tree. The Planning Commission considered that revised application at their June 25th meeting. At that hearing, they voted to deny the project due to potential construction impacts to the coast live oak street tree despite the modification made to the project. Their reasoning is detailed in the Planning Commission Resolution EX-4-19, which is attached to your report as Attachment 4. The property owner then submitted a timely appeal of the commission's denial, which is before the council tonight. To the appellant is requesting that the council overturn the Planning Commission's denial and approve the planning application. The appellant's statements are included in the agenda report as Attachment 2. The council's consideration of the appeal is de novo, per the municipal code. De novo means that the council will consider the application anew. The council may, the council was provided the whole record of the application as reviewed by the commission as attachments to your staff report. And council may affirm, reverse, modify, may affirm, reverse, or modify the decision of the Planning Commission. So let's start by reviewing the existing development on the site and the existing context for the development. The property is about 6,400 square feet. It slopes upward from the paved portion of Kings Road. Currently, the property is developed with a single-family home, just under 1,800 square feet in size, with no off-street parking and no driveway. This renders it non-conforming in regards to parking, as a home of its size has to provide at least two spaces off-street. Access to the home from the street is provided via a retained stairway, which is outlined on this slide in blue. There's a large wooden deck in the side and front yard of the property right next to the home. And there is a curb cut and driveway serving the neighboring property at 334 Kings Road, which passes through the property's frontage in the right-of-way in front of the property, as well as over a portion of the property itself. There is a recorded access easement to ensure that vehicular access is maintained for that neighboring property. The Kings Road right-of-way is 40 feet wide, but it is not fully improved. That's not uncommon, as you guys know, in a lot of our hillside neighborhoods. In this case, the front property line of 338 Kings is located well above and beyond the edge of the paved roadway. It's shown here in red where the property line is versus the existing paved roadway. As you can see, there is currently no street parking within the property's frontage.
Julia, I have a quick question, sorry. If you can go back to that other slide. So the, the red dotted line, is that the actual street width? I know that some of these streets are, okay, so that is the actual...
That's the property line, right.
That is the property line. So the, the driveway, the stairway, and then a corner of that existing house are in the public right-of-way?
That's right. And this house was built in 1940s. Shockingly, we didn't require surveys at the time to build houses, so it's not uncommon when you see older homes in Brisbane that they're either not fully within the bounds of their property, and that they are, you know, not featuring any off-street parking either for a home of that vintage.
Absolutely. People back in the day, they, they carved out the road to the best of their abilities, you know, using the topography of that they encountered, right? So that would make sense, not widening the road here because of the slope coming down from the, from the, from the north, or the west, I could say. Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about the existing site? No. I can just move quickly through. Here's some photos of the property. So this is looking south from Kings Road. You can see the subject, the existing home in the foreground. You can also see the existing curb cut and driveway, which serves, again, the neighboring property at 334 Kings, as well as the 28-inch circumference coast live oak street tree, which is in the right side of the frame. And here's another view that just gives a closer look at how that existing curb cut is operating. And then just looking around the neighborhood helps give a little bit more context as well. These are the homes at 340 and 350 Kings. I think this is a good illustration showing the level of excavation that's required to provide off-street parking. You can see here, there's some pretty tall retaining walls. And going the opposite way to the west, these are views of 326 and 334 Kings, again, kind of showing the natural topography of the hillside rising up from the paved street and the height of retaining walls that's required to provide that parking off the street.
So I have a question. Are these homes that you just showed also approached into public right-of-way?
So I think 350 Kings is a good example. This is a newer construction, so you can see the widening they've had to do. I don't have a pointer, unfortunately, but if you look at the white line that's painted around the, where that, the garbage cans are and in front of the parking pad, that's basically, they, and you compare that to the retaining wall right next to it at 340 Kings, that's probably an approximation of where the, the street begins and private property, the boundary between the private property and the street.
So the answer is probably no, that they are not approaching into the city right-of-way?
350, definitely not. It's newer construction. The garage is probably right about at the lot line. But going to the east, I think similarly, like 326 Kings, the garage is probably right at the lot line. We didn't get property line surveys for adjacent properties.
Okay, I just wanted to know if this was something that is typical and usual in, in construction, that we allow new construction to continue to approach on the property?
New construction would have to comply with, with current standards for setbacks. But we don't, when someone comes in with a project, if it's a house that has a non-conforming setback, the new construction has to comply. We're not going to make them remove a wall of the existing structure to comply with a setback. So the old structure gets to stay in its place, the new structure has to comply. Does that make sense?
It does. And Julia, you'll show us a similar slide that will have the red dotted line and then the garage?
Yes, we'll look at the proposed plans, so you can see where the garage would be on the property.
Before we move on, everybody jumped in too quick, I was on mute. We did have a question raised previously about... whether or not there will be a conflict of interest for councilmembers to participate in this discussion if they have to recuse themselves from the appeal decision. That's because one councilmember, Ms. Cunningham, is, is within 500 feet of the property. Under state law, if you're within 500 feet of the property, which is more guideline than anything. But, one question is, could voting on this have a material financial impact on the property, either of her home? Or has the, uh, material financial impact, is it, on development potential? That's not, you know, income-producing potential, not here. Highest and best use, perhaps. Character of your property by substantial, you're offering profit flows, not here. Market value, too soon to tell. The standard is whether or not that potential for a material financial increase is more of a speculative. I'm, I'm gonna just simplify it. In this instance, given the factors I just outlined, we advised Ms. Cunningham that we did not see a need to refuse as a matter of law. But I wanted to give Councilmember Cunningham the opportunity to speak to the record if she does want to recuse or not, and then I need to come back to why the council... Tom, can you clarify, Karen lives on Tulare Street. Is your own property around there?
Uh, I'll, I'll speak to that. I have a property on Sierra Point, which is two streets away from this property. It's a rental property. And I, I looked at it, and it's like, it's going to have no effect on my property or anything to do with my property, in my opinion.
Okay, 'cause I asked to send it in. Before we go there, let's, let's finish with Ms. Cunningham, because it's a separate...
Okay, I, I want to clear on what, I thought it was a...
Yeah, that's why I interrupted. I didn't want to go further. Go ahead, Councilmember Cunningham. You, did you just say that you concluded it would have no effect?
I don't believe it'll have any effect on my property one way or the other. It's, uh, two streets higher up from my property. It's just as the crow flies within the 500 feet, I believe.
Thank you. And you decided not to recuse, and, and just for the record...
Correct.
We're gonna do this earlier. We got into the presentation too quickly, as I said. But I also want to say, council for the city reviewed this, and, and we did not see a need to review under the state's, or need to recuse under the state law. Councilmember Conway has a different fact pattern, but sufficiently, he's not within 500 feet, he's sufficiently close that there could be a perception of a conflict. The same criteria I went through before also applies with Councilmember Conway. However, legally, he's outside the distance, the guidance. He too could decide out of appearance that he does not want to participate in the discussion or vote, or he could decide that... He does. It's really a judgment call, as it was for Councilmember Cunningham. Council, to the city, myself, as well as former City Attorney, we're both concluded that this was highly speculative as well, and we left the decision to the comfort of Mr. Plonner.
Thank you. Clark, did you have any comments about your refusal?
No, I, I just had, if I was within 500 feet, and I'm over, over 500 feet, I'm comfortable with participating.
Thank you. So, we can resume with the staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay. So, let's talk about the proposed project. So, just kind of to set the table, the municipal code requires discretionary review of grading proposals for projects that exceed certain thresholds, as established in Title 17 and Title 15. The city engineer actually issues grading permits. He requires detailed technical studies to be submitted with the grading permit application. So, this would be geotechnical soils reports, drainage and hydrological studies and plans, truck haul routes, et cetera. All this technical information is required to be prepared by and is reviewed by licensed professionals. The applicant in this case did provide a geotechnical investigation to the Planning Commission at their request as an informational document. But typically, at this level of discretionary review, that, that level of technical information is not reviewed. So, the proposal calls for 357 cubic yards of soil cut and export from the site to accommodate a new two-car garage, expanded driveway, and access stairway. Additions to the main dwelling are also proposed. Accessory dwelling unit would be established on the second floor above the garage. And then, there would be slight expansion of the second-level existing living space, as well as the upper-level living space to accommodate a new elevator. The project complies with the R1 district development standards regarding floor area, lot coverage setbacks, and height. And then, again, though the project would add two new off-street parking spaces where there aren't any existing, the project itself is not triggering compliance with, with parking. So, these are voluntarily being provided by the applicant. And finally, the city engineer will require street improvements based on the scope of the project, which we'll review. So, this slide shows the excerpt of the proposed site plan. So, you can see here, outlined in blue, the footprint of the additions. So, again, that would be the garage, and then ADU on the second level. The top would be a terrace. You can also see the proposed driveway expansion and curb cut expansion, shown in gray, as well as the new access stairway from the street to provide access to the home. And I'll turn on my little things here. So, as you can see, the existing access easement for 334 Kings, which is shown in that purple triangle, will be totally unobstructed and retained. So, the existing curb cut is about 21 feet. They would widen it to 29 feet. This is to allow for safe agress and ingress for both 338 and 334 Kings. And the city engineer will require that the Kings Road, the paved portion of the roadway, be widened to 20 feet. That's our standard roadway width. So, I've shown that here with a little red line. And here is an excerpt of the grading plan. So, as you can see, the grading plan shows the footprint of excavation, as well as the volume. So, it's limited to the area of the garage additions, access stairways, and driveway expansion. It also shows the foundation and retaining wall design and some drainage information as well. So, showing how the new foundation retaining walls will allow for collection of groundwater, as well as stormwater runoff to be collected and routed into the city's storm drain system. So, this section shows how the additions will be set into the hillside, as well as views of the retaining wall and foundation design. And I've shown here in orange, the existing grade. This is an elevation, looking at the project from the street, from Kings Road. So, again, you can see the new garage. Sorry, I'm hearing a little bit of feedback. Okay. You can see the new garage, the new access from the street retained by that retaining wall, and the ADU at the second level and deck at the top. Okay, so moving on to the analysis and findings. So, though the code requires discretionary review of grading applications meeting a certain threshold, it doesn't codify findings for approval. So, in 2003, the Planning Commission adopted guidelines for reviewing grading permit applications that do contain findings for approval. These guidelines are based on various general plan policies in regards to design level considerations and aesthetics, as opposed to technical feasibility. The full text of those guidelines is attached to your report as Attachment 6J. So, with the conditions of approval contained in the resolution, the project would meet the guidelines for council's approval. The first guideline is that the proposed grading is minimized and designed to reflect or fit comfortably with the natural topography. So, as seen in the grading plans, the proposed excavation is limited to the footprint of the additions, the required driveway widening, and pedestrian access stairways to allow access to the house and ADU from the street. The location and volume of the excavation is the minimum necessary to allow the site to conform to the covered parking and driveway design standards in the municipal code. This includes our minimum interior dimensions for garages, as well as our maximum driveway grades. The proposed excavation is also the minimum, minimum necessary to allow safe egress and ingress for cars coming in and out of the drive, the garages of both 334 and 338 Kings. It'd essentially be a shared driveway, so we had to have adequate width. And finally, the grading plan is designed to allow the building addition to sit within the hillside without significantly altering the surrounding topography. The second guideline is that the proposed grading is designed to avoid large exposed retaining walls. So, the proposed grading would result in one exposed retaining wall in the, in the front yard of about eight feet in height, extending into the public right-of-way. This would be associated with the new access stairway, which, again, will need to be excavated out of the hillside. With the conditions of approval, the visual impact of this wall would be minimized with either vegetative screening or application of bearing finished materials to break up the massing of the wall. That would be at the applicant's option at building permit, subject to the community development director's approval. The third guideline is that the proposed grading would conserve existing street trees, existing trees on the property, both that are protected by species or by their size. And where removal of the trees can't be avoided, the guidelines require replacement planting. So, the grading plans do not call for removal of any trees on the subject property or on the street. Excavation will occur to the south and east of an existing 28-inch coast live oak street tree, as I showed you in the photos previously. This is the street tree that was the subject of the commission's concern in their review of this project back in June. The city engineer has reviewed the plans. Obviously, tree removal in the right-of-way is subject to the city engineer's review and approval. He has, he will impose conditions on the grading permit to ensure the tree is protected both during and after construction. And he'll additionally, additionally require the applicant to post a bond for the value of the tree. The city engineer's conditions are detailed in the attached resolution as Condition B4. Sorry, I wasn't advancing my slides. The last finding in the guidelines is related to compliance with the HCP, which does not apply to this property, so it is not applicable. So, with that, staff is recommending that council uphold the appeal and approve the application subject to the findings and conditions of approval in the attached draft resolution. That will conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Julia. First, I think, if it's the council's pleasure, do you have any questions for staff, or would you like to hear from the applicant?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
There are.
Julia, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at a, a drawing, and I don't know if this is the, the old one or what, but it shows a on-street parking spot that's being provided there, and you didn't really address that in the staff report at all. Is that, is that correct?
So, there, there is no requirement for them to provide on-street parking. You may have been looking at the February plans, which did, at the time, propose two new on-street parking spaces within the frontage of 338 Kings. At the time, the city engineer also had required them, the applicant, to widen existing parking spaces across the street from them as well. There were existing spaces that needed to be improved. So, that was back in February, under the previous proposal. That is not before the council tonight. The current proposal would include widening of the paved road to 20 feet, but would not include any new on-street parking.
Those two...
Would you like me to go back?
Okay. Thank you. That's a question I had. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. It looked like they were providing parking also to me. And Cliff, you had questions of staff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, that was, that was one of my questions, but I, I think perhaps you answered it, Julia. The, I guess the original plans were to take out the tree. And the tree, and both those trees are in the public right-of-way. So, that's where the off-street parking was going to be. But now, since the trees are staying, that off-street parking? Okay, so, you explain that then.
Sure. And I, if I can figure out how to do it again, I might pull up a plan sheet. So, essentially, the first proposal back in February was to expand the driveway to the west. So, actually, the driveway was proposed to be where the 28-inch coast live oak tree is currently. They were gonna fully expand and just remove that tree, so they could pour their new driveway there. The change in the design that's before you tonight was to not make any change to the existing driveway along its eastern, or sorry, its western edge, and to expand it instead to the east. So, if you'll bear with me, I can try to pull that up. If you have other questions too, go ahead and...
Sure. Yeah, so, I, I, I noticed in the staff report, there's a, I guess, additional work to the existing home. And doing that additional work, the, the plans indicate that they will strengthen the stability of the house to the, I guess, to the foundation. So, there'll, there'll be additional engineering to make the house more structurally sound. Is that correct?
That is correct. I think the applicant, or sorry, the appellant's engineer can talk a little bit more about the foundation stabilization for the existing house. But yes, that was noted in the geotechnical investigation provided to commission that stabilization would need to move forward for the existing home. So, I've pulled up the proposed site plan here. So, again, and I apologize if it's hard for you guys to see. I tried to make it as bright as I could. So, if you look in the lower right-hand corner, there's a dimension for 20 feet, and there's a red line going vertically. So, that is delineating the expansion of the paved roadway. You can see going along, I wish I had a pointer, to the left of that, a new concrete curb that's labeled. So, that would be the extent, basically, of the 20-foot roadway widening. So, again, it, it would not be able to accommodate on-street parking. It's not dimensioned, but that, the dimension between the, the curb would, it would be just, it would be for the street. It's not wide enough. We need at least eight feet of width for an on-street parking space, and it wouldn't be eight feet wide. So, this would just be paved roadway, no new on-street parking.
Okay, all right. And so, then the letter from the applicant talking about the on-street parking for guests and neighbors, that's, that's no longer part of the met.
So, the driveway design, and again, I think the applicant's engineer can walk you through a little bit more how this driveway will function. But I know that in a previous iteration of the design, the area closest to the new stairway and landing was previously proposed as an on-street parking space. Because it is technically within the right-of-way, they're not, they're not identifying a parking space in that location in this iteration of the plan. So, that's, that's not part of the proposal.
Okay. And then, you know, just looking at the, at this site plan here, we don't have the, the dotted red line. But we do know that in the bottom-left corner of the structure, that is where the property line goes to.
Yeah, apologies.
So, if you ran that across the, the new structure, the garage, is gonna stay within the boundaries of the property owner, or not in the right-of-way?
The garage will be set back, actually, from several feet from the front property line. So, I'm sorry I did not outline this, outline it in red. If you look really closely, and maybe I can even zoom in. I can't. The property line is shown in a dotted black line. It's approximately the bottom of the purple triangle. That's about the property line. So, you can see the garage is, I don't have the... So you can see the garage is, um, I don't have the dimension right in front of me, but it's about, uh, nine feet from the front property line.
Okay, all right, good. Um, so we have this, uh, existing driveway slab. Is that going to stay and they're going to pave over it, or is the entire driveway going to be, um, broken up all the way and then a new slab or?
The grading plan, I'll pull it up there. So the applicant's plans don't identify any modifications to the existing driveway. Um, per the grading plan, they would just be pouring new concrete, um, in the locations identified here on the grading plan. Uh, but I would, uh, ask that if the applicant is available to address the council that they confirm that.
Uh, uh, all right. Uh, you know, Randy, I know that you're there. I mean, are there any issues with using the existing slab and then just, I know widening it and then, I guess, budding up the, um, the new driveway to the existing?
No, sir. That's fairly common construction that can be done. I mean, the driveway appears to be in good condition. So I don't, I don't know that the applicant's engineer or architect has seen any reason to recreate it or rebuild it.
Okay. Um, let's see. You know, in the staff report under project history, um, it is the, uh, second paragraph, and it's talking about the planning commission. It says, and that's the, "They also expressed, uh, concern with the safety of the proposed project and with this potential impact on site drainage." So I, I'm, I'm curious to know how, you know, what, what drew them to that, uh, concern? Uh, was there information that helped, uh, support that?
So the planning commission's initial concerns, uh, they voiced in the February public hearing. They did touch on concerns about the feasibility of the project, the slope stability and impacts on drainage. Um, the council, or sorry, the commission did receive public comment, which was attached to your staff report in attachment nine, that I think brought up some of those issues and concerns from the public. Um, so that's the origin, I believe, of, of their concerns relating to that.
Okay, but it, so there wasn't any documents that were provided that demonstrated, uh, that there was an issue with, with site drainage?
No, to the contrary. The, uh, June staff report actually included, as I mentioned, a geotechnical investigation prepared by a geotechnical engineer that found the project was feasible, that the site, they, you know, performed soil borings to determine what the characterization of the soil was and that it was found to be sufficient to support the project. Um, so the information that was provided to the commission in June was actually, you know, supporting that the project actually was safe and feasible.
Okay. And then, and then ultimately though, in the end, the planning commission denied the project, not, not because of the, the soil conditions, but more about the tree and the ability to save the tree?
Correct. So again, the applicant's plans that were proposed in June, different from the February plans, stopped, you know, eliminated the encroachment of the driveway into the actual trunk of the tree. Um, in June, staff recommended a condition of approval, basically to say, you know, even though the project has been modified, to, you know, move the work away from that tree, we still wanted to recommend that a, a arborist report be prepared just to, uh, verify for sure what the impacts could be to that tree. Um, that was recommended as a condition for the city engineer to require at, prior to the grading permit. Um, but at the time, the plans themselves were modified to eliminate that encroachment into the area of the tree. So they were not proposing removal of the tree as part of the project.
All right. So, and, and you said that the existing, uh, driveway is, is how many feet wide?
The existing curb cut is twenty-one feet. I believe the driveway narrows as it moves up the hill.
Okay, so somewhere between twenty-one feet and about eighteen, seventeen feet wide going up the hill?
Yeah, we can actually, maybe I can pull up that plan again?
Yeah, cause I went to the, the property site, uh, today, you know, and just looked at the, the, um, at the, the slope of the driveway. Uh, there were a couple scratches at the bottom, so I guess maybe if you go a little too fast, you can kind of bottom out as you're coming up. Uh, but there, there appeared to be no cracks. There didn't appear to be any, any roots coming up into the, uh, into the driveway. And I, and, and I'm sure the applicant can, um, talk about this. There's no plans, at least that have been submitted, that this driveway would be, uh, modified in any way, just added on to, um, closer to the, um, closer to the house.
That's right.
So where the tree is and then where the new, um, addition to the driveway, probably at least, at least fifteen feet, seventeen feet?
Yeah, between fifteen and seventeen, actually.
Okay. All, all right, thank you. And, uh, that's it for the questions, Miss.
I have some questions. Oops, am I unmuted? No. Um, so I also drove up and took a look at the site and I have to tell you, from a, a safety perspective, that area on King's Road is very narrow and it's kind of pretty scary from a fire perspective. I'm wondering, um, i- is the street widening to accommodate, uh, the larger, um, fire vehicles when they go up there? I do have a series of questions. I'll try and keep it.
I'll take that one for, uh, for Julia, ma'am. Yes. The reason that the minimum roadway width we require is twenty feet is because that is the minimum width specified in the California Fire Code.
Okay. So that's my first question. So even though the trees are not being removed, the planning commission still denied this project based on their personal assumption that it could potentially damage the trees? Is that correct?
The staff report for the June twenty-fifth hearing did, as I say, contain a recommendation of condition of approval to require an arborist report before grading permit to confirm, um, what if any impacts would be, uh, the trees would be subjected to from construction. Um, so it was a, a recommendation kind of as a best practice, especially since it's a street tree. We usually would want an arborist report anyway. So, um, I, there was acknowledgement and discussion in the staff report of, you know, wanting to have an expert testify to what potential impacts could occur from the project. But no, the information provided by the applicant and the design provided by the applicant did not identify any immediate conflicts that would either make the tree have to be removed in order to accommodate the project, or to indicate that it would actually significantly damage the tree so that it wouldn't survive.
Okay. And the, the public comments and concerns regarding, um, hydrology, engineering, arborists, uh, soils engineers, et cetera, were any of the people who were giving opinions on this project professionals in any of these areas?
Not to my knowledge, but I admit I don't know all those folks personally who testified.
No one identified themselves as a professional in the field as part of their, uh, testimony.
Okay, so you guys all know that I'm all about safety and sort of being part of the OES. One of the things that's been talked about sadly in some cases is because of the, the ongoing fires, is the state's desire to start removing trees within cities, which is going to break everybody's hearts. So at some point, moving down the road, the state could tell us, you know, if you're going to have any insurance at all in these upper streets in Brisbane, you're going to have to rethink what you're doing about trees. I just want to throw that in the mix. But the thing that is a little bit of concern to me right now is that it seems the planning commission's decision to deny this grading permit seems in direct conflict with the professional soils engineers' report. So how, how was it denied other than their fear of these trees being disturbed? There's my question. Question of the.
Well, again, there was, um, you know, obviously a community discussion, a public hearing. The commission takes that information, they internalize it, they, they make their decisions, um, you know, in the parameters of what the objectives or what the sort of stated criteria that, that are set forth. Um, did some of those factors that were sort of outside their purview influence their decision? I don't, I don't want to speculate on, on some of that. I mean, they did ultimately make their conclusion based on the criteria set forth in the resolution. So, um, but certainly some of those other issues were discussed in the hearing and, and they heard those issues.
Um, this is probably a question for you, Randy, and then that's my last question. How does the street widening of this project improve the safety on the street in your opinion?
It's absolutely critical to it. That creating that extra widening space does two things. In that immediate area, it creates a zone where if a fire engine were responding to either a medical or a fire call, that the engine could actually stop and they could open their doors and work from both sides of the trucks. When those doors open up, that truck becomes twelve to fourteen feet wide and you just can't do that in a fourteen-foot wide street. But when you do it in a twenty-foot wide street, you've got room to move around the engine. The other thing it does is during the event of a mandatory evacuation, having a, a number of spots in the roadway where it's twenty-foot wide creates a place where two vehicles can pass. In other words, you create a place where residents forced to evacuate can move down the hill and emergency fire apparatus responding to the fire can move up the hill.
Okay. Do, do we know if any of the people who, um, spoke at public comment relative to this had any other interests close by that might have been, uh, or might be, um, improved or positively affected by denying this project? Do we know?
I will leave that to the planning folks to opine upon.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not aware of any, um, particular gain, um, certainly that was articulated or, or was obvious from any of the testimony.
I, I think the testimony, at least from two of the folks who communicated to the commission, were of property owners in the area. Um, so, you know, they did, they were residents and owned property in the vicinity of the project.
Thank you. I'm done.
Are there any other council questions for staff or would you like to hear from the applicant or the appellant?
To hear from the appellant.
Okay.
I'm admitting to the, to the meeting, both the engineer and the appellant.
Good evening, uh, please, um, even as mayor and council members. My wife and I, we bought this house up two years ago. We fell in love with Brisbane. Uh, but we're still renting and not moving yet. You know, King's Road is very tight, as mentioned previously, especially in our section. So it's imperative for us to build a garage for our daughter, her family, and everyone around us to be safe. Besides improving the overall deal of the city, this project will also enhance the parking situation desperately for the other residents on King's Road. But more importantly, it will improve the foundation with a new drainage system and even putting pillars to improve slope stability for such houses sitting on a hill. However, we really do not expect the planning commission can just so easily overrule experts so carelessly and without any guard. I mean, these are people liable with state professional licenses, perhaps not to mention with years of training and experiences. For example, we were under pressure to voluntarily provide hydrology report. They asked to volunteer such report because they know it is an overreaching their policy that is not even part of their grading review. But what's even worse is that it is a very costly study, yet it serves no purpose. So indeed, we talked to two of the most reputable hydrologists in this area and, um, regarding this, and they indicated that the issue should be a stormwater runoff design, which we ordered by following all the requirements that's adopted by the city engineering department in Southern Power and Energy. And when we brought in experts, including geotechnical engineer who has years of experiences, including a lot of similar work done here in Brisbane, to affirm that the limitless work of building just two car garages is both safe and feasible with only standard techniques and common practices applied. He even positively stated how you put the slope stability and prevent sliding. Yeah, with any civil engineer expertise of relying on studies from a local engineer, the commissioners simply concluded that it's not safe and the other commissioners agree with him without any basis. So our geotechnical engineer just left the meeting with some shock. So during the final review, the commissioners once again acted as the experts themselves and being the arborist to deny a project with a foundation plan that will kill a nearby tree without even going over to look at that tree themselves or a proper way by relying on experts that the planning departments have just suggested. And furthermore, our architect developed their construction plan according to, um, and even review like the engineers to sure, ensure that, um, this is, uh, comply to all the code and regulations. Um, so regarding one point earlier about the existing driveway, um, it is in very good condition. There's no tree root, um, penetrating or changing of the slope. Um, we don't have any plan to improve that other than extending more to the other side, um, to widen it for, um, both us and the neighbor as well. So given that, um, we respectfully have to compliment the tree to, um, reverse this erroneous and just impulsive decision made by the planning commission. And on the line, it was, um, our architect, Abraham, um, he'll share his perspective on this matter. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for the, um, owner.
Go ahead, uh, Mr. Lance.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so, uh, John, I, I read your letter from you and your wife. Um, in the first paragraph, and then this date, this letter is dated August twenty-fifth, so, uh, last week. Um, it says, uh, it's in the middle of the paragraph, uh, "Therefore, the neighbors in our section are excited about our project as we will be taking two cars off the street and even create a third spot using our land for guests and neighbors." So, um, and I think, I'm sure you, you heard the conversation with, uh, with Julia that it, that third spot isn't in your plans. Can you, uh, elaborate a little bit more on, on, on what you mean by that?
Uh, sure. So, um, what I meant by, um, taking two cars off the street is, um, um, we are parking on the street and it's very hard to, um, to park in that section, as you know. Um, by creating two, um, two car garage, we'll be able to, um, park in our garage instead. Um, regarding the third one, this one, actually, I'm not entirely sure, but I, I believe, um, I, I don't, I believe that spot is the one in front of the house, as you see, um, by widening the road and, and going to the, to the other side. Um, and that, that's just my understanding. I, I, um, I believe there's enough space there to, to park.
Uh, yeah, I think, uh, Julia, uh, said that there, there wasn't. Twenty feet isn't, uh, wide enough. I think it needs to be twenty-eight feet, Julia, right? Um.
Okay. That's my misunderstanding.
Okay, so that's a misunderstanding, because it also says your land.
Yeah.
And based upon the property lines. I don't think that's the case. So, okay.
Thank you for adjusting that. One of the reasons is because, as Julia mentioned earlier, the original plan actually called for two additional spots on Kings Road, and that would really serve the neighbors well. But the planning commissioner was very hostile about anything. So, we just wanted to reduce and minimize the amount of excavation needed because in order to create more spaces on that road, we're gonna have to excavate more. So, we just want, we don't want to create trouble, just do whatever minimum, just have two spots so we can get in and out of car more easily. Because it is very difficult to, my daughters get out of car daily basis, which is just very tough. But hopefully, we can have a garage so we could park more safely that way.
Yeah, that would be good. Your situation is that because you have that easement, you would have to park your cars in the garage, right? You couldn't just park on the driveway. So, your garage will be for parking your cars. All right. Thank you.
So, Mr. Wang, Mr. Zavala has been able to join us right now. He is not responding to unmuting himself.
Oh, he told me earlier that he's on line. He will be able to respond.
I see him on the line, but he is not unmuting himself anymore.
Oh, oh.
I've texted him as well, and he hasn't responded.
He did text me about, just to say I didn't respond. But I just, I just came again to ask you, hopefully, if he could get on.
Ingrid, is it possible for us to unmute him manually? He's allowing me to do that. Let me re-admit him back to the waiting room if that will work.
I think he needs to go star six, right?
Yes, star six.
Okay.
Says he's on here, just gotta unmute it, if he may not be in front of this. Madam Mayor, if I can ask the city attorney, would it be appropriate just to open the public hearing and then come back to Mr. Zavala when we're able to get off of him?
Yeah, that's entirely appropriate. Take a break back into it when he's available, as long as it's acceptable to the council.
Why don't we open up the meeting to the public comments, then, if we have anyone on the line or have submitted comments to us directly on this?
Yeah, we have a couple of public comments, written comments that can be read into the record.
Hi, thank you. This is from Prem Law. Dear Ingrid, I left a voicemail message with you at 415-508-2100.
I think Abraham's there.
Sounds like we're talking.
I think Abraham's there.
Hi, Abraham.
Okay, we need to get control over who's here, and everybody else needs to mute.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes. Is the voice coming from your home? Abraham? There we go. We can hear you. Take it off mute, please.
I believe he's watching the livestream, so it's providing feedback when he's calling.
Ingrid, there's a little symbol beside his name to the left. I don't know what that means.
Here's he's muted himself.
Yeah. It's a different symbol than I'm used to seeing. I think Randy's right.
Okay, I'm gonna have him.
There he is, there he is.
Hi, Abraham.
Yes. I'm okay?
Yes, we hear you better. Hi, Abraham.
Hi.
Abraham, Abraham, please turn down background.
Hi. Hi. Yes.
Can you please turn down your TV or the device that's playing the livestream?
I'm okay. My volume is really down.
That's better. Thank you.
Okay, can I talk right now?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Well, as I was saying, the reason because I'm here today is because we were denied by the planning commission twice. I will jump directly to the, to the, to the second hearing. After the first hearing, we listened to what they say, the commission and the, the people from the public, and that we came back with a different project, slightly different, I mean, in size. With this new, this new layout, we didn't have to remove the tree. That was one of the main problems at the first hearing. In addition to that, we prepared the soil report. We prepared some basic drainage plan for the existing roof of the house, for the hill. We explained this to the commission. But when was the turn for them to discuss the project, it turned out to me like they were going into the engineering part of the project and doing a lot of questions regarding that, questioning pipe sizes, drainage system, speculating that if the existing house has already some problems, the new project will create additional project, additional problems to the, to the, I mean, to the house, to the immediate neighborhood, and also, well, a lot of comments about, about the engineering that at some point I felt like we don't have construction documents to explain every, every step of the process. This were, the architectural portion is pretty much what we want to do. The engineering part, aside from the soil report, the retaining walls, the drainage system, that's what we had for this, for this step of the project. I know that the, if this is approved, we still have to go a long process to get into and actually having a building permit. With those final plans, I assume that all the, all the issues related to the project will be resolved, and that's only when we can start with some construction. That's why the letter that I wrote, I kind of mentioned that I don't really know what was the planning commission role. It was just to decide on the excavation or what kind of capacity they have to start discussing engineering issues, soil engineering issues, and somewhat was really frustrating for me to go into, into all these things, because it made me feel like we were unprepared to discuss the project, because we didn't have a lot of information that they were referring to. And also, the second, the second part that, that also was very frustrating was the fact that, I know that these are public hearings, people can express their own opinions, but when they, when they express opinions without any basis or any knowledge, and you say something because they won't say that, and they don't know if this is going to affect a project where we have been working for over a year, and I think that we have covered all the bases, and that's the whole thing, why it was confusing and frustrating to go through the process. I think that if you have questions, I can, I can try to answer them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the council, from Mr. Zavala?
Not at this point. Not at this point. May have some later.
Okay. So, thank you, and if you'd like to mute yourself and stand by, we can hear from other public comments and have our discussion, and then if we need some more information from you.
Thank you.
We can ask for it at that point. So, if the clerk would like to go ahead with public comments.
Hi. Thank you. I'll go ahead and read. This is a public comment from Prem Law. Dear Ingrid, I left a voicemail message with you at 415-508-2100 yesterday at 8:25 2020 at 1:44 PM, and have not yet heard back from you, so I will try an email instead. I received the notice of public hearing regarding grading review EX 419 338 Kings. Be prepared on 8/21/2020. And I have the following questions regarding the applicant's appeal of the planning commission's unanimous denial of its grading application on 6/25/2020. City council will consider the appeal in a de novo hearing. So, what does the de novo hearing classification imply in this case? Will city council have access to the letter submitted to the planning commission on 6/25/2020 in opposition to the grading request? Will city council have access to the reasoning behind the planning commission's unanimous denial? What information, documents, etc., will city council have access regarding the 6/25/2020 planning commission hearing specifically? Also, during the 6/25/2020 planning commission hearing, access was not provided to the soils report regarding the 338 Kings project to anyone opposing the project. With regard to the 9/3/2020 city council hearing, will the soils report be made available? And if so, on what date and by what means? If a real estate attorney wishes to make a presentation to city council regarding this appeal, how far in advance would he have to contact you? Finally, I would like to express my concern that the selection of this 9/3/2020 hearing date for this appeal with the CZU lightning complex fires raging out of control in both San Mateo and San Andres counties and not even 20% contained is not appropriate. Brisbane and the surrounding areas were under a red flag warning for evacuation, and though the warning was lifted on 8/24/2020, it may be reinstated anytime between now and 9/3/2020. This news article about the CZU complex fire was published this afternoon. What it looks like on the fire lines of the CZU complex fire. The article should make clear to you that dangers this fire represents to Brisbane and the complications it will present to anyone hoping to make a presentation at the 9/3/2020 hearing regarding this appeal. A hearing date for this appeal should not be selected until the CZU lightning complex fire has been contained. Thank you, Prem Law.
Do we have any other public comments?
I have another comment. Dear Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm writing to you in support of the appeal submitted by the owners of 338 Kings Road for the planning commission's PC action that denied the grading permit. I happen to have watched both PC meetings of 2/27/20 for the initial grading permit application and 6/25/20 subsequent hearing after the project was revised to preserve the tree that the PC was concerned with. The property owners seem to have gone above and beyond the requirements for a grading permit to address the planning commission's concerns. The analysis by the city engineer staff and the geotechnical report provided by a licensed expert supports that there should be no impact to the tree in question. The city engineer recommended an evaluation by a licensed arborist be added to the condition of approval to further ensure no impact to the tree. This must still not good enough for the PC. The PC seems to be requiring 100% guarantee the tree won't be impacted. This seems unreasonable and not equitable. I question whether any other property owners has had to meet the same guarantee, or even though their project doesn't include removing a mature tree in the property. An expert analysis supports that. You have to guarantee that tree removal won't be necessary if you have a mature tree in the vicinity of your construction. I'm honestly appalled the PC is discounting credible expertise, analysis, provided by the city engineer staff and geotechnical reports. Instead, without any expertise or analysis by any expert, the PC claims there would be potential impact to the tree's root system due to excavation and trenching during construction and potential impact to the tree trunks from cars exiting the garage. This type of analysis expertise is in the city engineer's purview, not the PC. If you view the 6/23 meeting for about an hour 22 minutes into it, you'll see John Schmicki trying to diplomatically point this out to the PC. I think the PC's actions set a bad precedent for future homeowners trying to make improvements to their house slash land. Frequently, these improvements provide a public benefit, such as freeing up street parking, improving soil stability, and widening the streets. I would also like you to consider refunding the property owners the cost of the appeal, as it seems to me the PC base their denial of the grading permit outside of their purview and expertise. Perhaps some retraining of the PC should also be considered. Thank you, Kim Folian, 815 Humboldt Road. I also have one member of the public in the waiting room. Mr. Law, if you could unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello? Okay, can you hear me? Okay, great. All right. So, let me see if I can turn this down so we don't have any screeching problems. Just a second. Okay. So, first of all, I would like to discuss a few things regarding this application that were submitted on the appeal. For instance, the appeal statement includes the sentence that I think Mr. Lentz referred to earlier, saying, "Therefore, the neighbors in our section are excited about our project as we will be taking two cars off the street," and so on and so forth. But that's, that's a blatantly false statement. The next-door neighbors at 340 have even submitted a letter in opposition to this project, and the neighbors at 334 on the other side are also opposed to this project. So, I'm not really sure where that statement comes from. And I also saw on the appeal the statement saying, "Without consulting an arborist or any expert on the subject matter, the planning commission erroneously conducted, concluded that our project will cause the death of the tree," and so on and so forth. concluded that our project will cause the death of the tree and so on and so forth. But does the planning commission really have the authority to ask for an arborist? I think they asked for a hydrology report and I don't know if they were able to ask for an arborist report. But even if they did ask for it, I don't think they have the authority to do that. So that statement to me is ridiculous. Without consulting an arborist, well, they can consult an arborist as far as I can tell. Um, also, let's take a look at, um, exhibit. Uh, let's see. There is a statement, um, hydrology. Okay, so if we look at, uh, Exhibit A Paragraph 3 and Exhibit B Paragraph B43. Um, one of the paragraphs states that, let me pull it up just a second. Essentially, one of the, uh, paragraph, in paragraphs indicates that if this, uh, project goes through, that the tree will be, um, checked on once a year for three years, uh, to make sure that it's still, um, stable and that it's healthy. Whereas the other paragraph says that it will be checked on after the, uh, construction is finished for a period of up to three years. Well, but that doesn't say that it's three years. It could be one month after the construction. So those two paragraphs are in conflict. So Exhibit, uh, A Paragraph 3 conflicts with Exhibit B Paragraph B43. Um, also, I noticed on, um, Exhibit B Paragraph H, I'm kind of wondering why that paragraph was stuck in there in the first place. It sounds to me a lot more like the city staff is responding to the threat of a lawsuit than acting on behalf of the neighbors and of the community. Um, that's the type of statement, Paragraph H Exhibit B, that you see when somebody is trying to avoid a lawsuit. So that to me is a red flag. And also I'd like to ask, as far as Exhibit B Paragraph I is concerned, where it says that the planning director can approve minor modifications, quote unquote. What are those minor modifications and what does that whole, um, what, what does that, what does it mean essentially? Um, it should be specifically stated what those minor modifications are. Otherwise, it could just mean anything. And, um, I would also like to question with regards to the soils report that was submitted. I submitted, uh, a series of questions to, um, the city, uh, the, the assistant legal attorney of the city and also to staff and to city council and to the planning commission for, uh, just for, uh, an update because the soils report that was submitted by, uh, the, the applicant's engineers did not contain a significant slope stability analysis nor did it contain information concerning landslide analysis. And if you look up the definition of slope stability analysis, uh, one of the many definitions, one of the most important definitions is a previously stable slope can be affected by a number of predisposing factors or processes that make the safety factor decrease either by increasing the shear stress or by decreasing the shear strength and can ultimately result in slope failure. Factors that can trigger slope failure include hydrologic events such as intense or prolonged rainfall, rapid snowmelt, progressive soil saturation, increase of water pressure within the slope. And I want to emphasize that, hydrologic events. And then also earthquakes, including aftershocks, internal erosion, which is piping, surface or toe erosion, artificial slope loading, for instance, due to the construction of a building, slope cutting, for instance, to make space for roadways, railways, or buildings, or slope flooding, for instance, by filling an artificial lake or damming a river. Now, even that mentions that hydrologic, hydrologic events can significantly affect slope stability. But we have no submission of a hydrology report. Why? It should be submitted and it should be evaluated. And there's a reason why I'm concerned about the hydrology of this property. And this goes all the way, way back to April of 2019. And out of the blue, water started coming out of the crack in, one of the cracks in my driveway and straight into the gutter in front of my house. And now that's something that usually happens when it rains. Um, and it's some, something that, you know, I just kind of expect whenever it rains. But it wasn't raining. And this water continued flowing for four or five days. So after I noticed it for one or two days, I said, where the hell is this water coming from? So I went for a walk up to Kings because I knew the water had to be coming from somewhere that was not, um, natural. So I went up to Kings and this, this house, 338 Kings, is directly up the slope from mine. There is one house in between my house and 338 Kings. So I got to 338 Kings and I heard something that sounded like a waterfall. I thought, what, what is this? So I went to 338 Kings and I found on the, um, gate a note from the public works department, I think the water department actually. And so I went, so, yes.
Interrupt for just a moment and
Okay.
You can wrap this up because you have exceeded the five minute limit. So
Okay.
If we can make your point fairly quickly, I would appreciate it.
Okay, so water, in other words, water had overflowed the koi pond in this house and was flowing down the mountainside to my house, out of my driveway and into my gutter for several days. So I know that this house has an immediate effect upon my house with regards to water flow. And therefore, if you do not do a hydrological analysis of how this project is going to affect the downslope neighbors like myself, you could be opening up all kinds of weird doors that you don't realize are possible. And that is, and incidentally, that tag was from the city of Brisbane Water Department dated, um, 4/24/19. And if that is allowed to happen, then this project could be a disaster for people like me downslope. And so I, because the planning commission cannot, uh, could not, um, take into consideration things like hydrology, you as the city council should be able to do that. And because you have the authority to ask for these things and the planning commission did not, I suggest that you do. Because if this causes a problem to my retaining wall, to my driveway, to my garage, and possibly to others of my neighbors at the, at my, at the adjacent properties on Humboldt, um, this is going to be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Prem.
Madam Mayor, if, if I may, I have a, a, just a quick comment and, and perhaps a question. When I was at the site today, um, the neighbor at 334 came out and he, uh, told me about the koi pond, uh, situation. And he told me that what had happened was the, and granted, you know, I can't confirm or deny this, but that the, uh, water to fill up the koi pond was left on for several days. And it was that, that water being left on, then, you know, of course filled up and, and then went down, you know, down the slope, you know, by gravity. Um, so, uh, does, does staff have any, um, you know, record of, of this occurring?
Well, is that a thing?
I mean, that, that's a true event. I mean, there is a koi pond on the property. It was overflowed. We did check because it's always the water department that goes out there. We, we are presumed to be the guilty parties, uh, when there's a water leak. And we went out and discovered this is where it's coming from. So we had them turn it off.
All right. So it wasn't, uh, like a natural phenomenon, you know, like some under, underground, uh, waterway, you know, elated, uh, from the site.
The garden hose left on.
Negligence. And a water hose left on multiple days can create a significant amount of water, correct?
And depending on who your neighbors are, sir, that could be a natural event. So, I'm just.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we have another member of, any members of the public wishing to speak?
Yes, um, Madam Mayor, we have one more, um, text message. Um, this is from Michelle Salmon. It seems to me that now the widening of the street will impinge on the tree and that is, it is a concern. And that is a concern. And will the construction and grading equipment impact the branches of the tree? And can they widen the street in the other, in the other side?
Thank you. Um, so that's the end of our public comments for the moment.
Um, we have one more in the waiting room. I'll admit them now.
Okay, thank you.
For the caller, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? In, in great, can you hear me? Okay, good. Okay, sorry, technology. Um, I have a couple of things to say and one, yes, uh, somebody left their water on for however many days and it caused a problem. But hydrology is an issue and I've looked at firsthand here on my street on Sierra Point Road where when they built the house at one ten, one, whatever it is, right across the street from us, they excavated, uh, like 20 dump trucks worth of dirt and built amongst a very large house with a very high retaining wall and a lot of French drains and everything and did everything according to what the specifications were. And, um, including having to install a pump for the elevator. And now our street is always wet, um, even in the summer because the house was built over a spring. And the house next door to us, that my grandmother, uh, built in 1940, for the first time ever, the lowest apartment flooded after they built that house. And so it is the fact that hydrology is an issue in Brisbane. And, um, someone said, well, do the people that testified at the public hearing have any, uh, uh, credentials for their testimony? And I would just like to say that experience living here in Brisbane is, is one credential and the other is that I do have a degree in biology, including botany. And so in addition to the hydrology, I, I don't know how many people remember the big landslide that happened in, um, I believe it was January of 1983 or 82 where, uh, you know, dirt and water came streaming down from the very top of the mountain all the way down. We've had, uh, also the tremendous landslide that we had, uh, I, I don't remember exactly what year it was. It might've been 2006, which took out a major portion of Humboldt Road and, uh, flowed mud down to the houses below it. And also a massive landslide that occurred above the, um, Littman School that didn't stop moving till August. So hydrology is an issue, especially here in Brisbane and especially when you build on the upper streets. In terms of trees, um, we need to treasure our urban forest a lot more than, than we do and take better care of it, including removing ivy and other things from our heritage trees. And, um, there's been a long history of, of damaging our trees in construction. And a good example is the two pine trees that were taken out this week on, uh, San Bruno Avenue and San Clara Street. And those trees have been there most of my life. I, I don't remember them not being there even when I went to elementary school there. And that was a really long time ago, right, Clark? And those trees had their roots trimmed after the Bell's house was torn down. They had their roots trimmed when, uh, they built that, um, condo complex right there. And that was the beginning of their end. And they died this week by being taken down because, um, that root trimming damaged and unbalanced those trees. And that was really too bad. And one of the other things that, um, is a real problem is we've had lots of talks about stormwater cleanliness and stormwater conditions and we now have, you know, a trough on San Bruno Avenue and a trough on visitation for stormwater capture. Well, one of the reasons that stormwater is such a problem is that we are overbuilding Brisbane, especially in the upper tiers of Brisbane. So the water doesn't have a chance to soak in. It just runs off and then runs downhill. And, and it, it does create a problem. And the other part of it is that really concerns me is they, we, we put these conditions of approval on projects and then we never follow up to make sure that those conditions of approval have been met over time. And there are numerous examples of that. Um, the one that comes to mind is where they, a lot split was allowed on Humboldt Road on a project that Joel Diaz was doing. And in that, they were supposed to replant trees and do all this other stuff. And instead they have an artificial lawn at the back of their property and never did replant the trees. So I don't consider that follow through on conditions of approval. And there are many, many examples of that. I understand the need for parking. I understand their pain about how it should have never been built the way it was, but it was the 40s, you know, the Wild West. We don't have a garage. It's a concern. But if we move forward with this, and, and I can feel the council's sentiment that they are, uh, moving forward, I think that every T needs to be crossed and every I needs to be dotted because this is a dangerous street. It is narrow. And widening the street will damage that tree. There is really no question about that in my mind. And yes, I do have a degree in botany and I do know about tree roots. Um, and so I think we need to carefully consider this and I, I really think that it's an issue and I think ADU should not necessarily be allowed in these upper streets that interface with the, um, the wild lands. Uh, it's just a problem. But if you do approve it, please make sure that everything is locked down tight, that you have the right drainage, that you have a hydrology report, that the goal ones with, goes along with the geology report, that you actually do take care not to damage and destroy that tree. And that whatever conditions of approval you put in place, you follow through on because we are really, really bad about that in the city of Brisbane. So thank you so much for your work and your consideration and my three, five minutes are up. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have any other written comments or people waiting in the, on video?
Yes, we have one more person in the waiting room. I'll unmute them now.
Thank you.
Caller, if you could unmute yourself by pressing star six. Thank you.
Good, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Michael Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident. I'm not a soils engineer, a hydrologist, or an engineer. And I hope that when you eventually approve this project, you approve the original configuration with the maximum street width, the maximum number of on-street parking places and removal of the tree, which will remove fire load. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the end of our public comments?
I also have some additional email. This is from Prem Law. Also, when I mentioned the 338 Kings water flow This is from Prem Lal. Also, when I mentioned the 338 Kings Water Flow from April 2019 on the residents of Brisbane Facebook page, Ron Davis responded on behalf of the owner. If there is any financial relationship, Madison Davis may need to reduce herself.
Well, I would love to address that. Are we ready for discussion? Because actually, this is part of my discussion.
Are we done with public comments?
There are no other public comments.
Okay, then go ahead, Ms. Davis.
So I actually have a...
Public hearing open? Yeah, okay. Sorry.
I think we should leave the public hearing open because we may still want to ask questions from the applicant or the appellant.
Okay.
I do have another text messages came in.
Okay.
This is from Michelle Salmon. I have one more comment. The planning commission did a very diligent job and a better plan resulted, so their work was not wasted.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, House Member Davis.
Okay. So I actually have very intimate knowledge of this property because I staged this property when it was for sale. So I did receive payment, sorry, my cat just decides she has to be here at this very moment. I did receive payment for staging that came from the real estate agent. It did not come from the seller and it did not come from the buyer. So there is no, there is no conflict of interest financially for me. And that is well passed. That was in 2018. But because of my staging of this property, I'm very well aware of the constraints that the property has. Biggest constraint being the parking. So we went to move in, we came with a very, very tiny truck. It was a nightmare. Anytime somebody came to pass on the street, our moving truck would have to move, go all the way around the block and come back. It was almost impossible for us to park our car and unload the stuff that we brought in our car because there is no parking there. It is also a street that is plagued by parking wars. If you live on one of those streets, you know what I'm talking about. People are very protective over their parking outside their house. And when somebody moves, another person will hurry up and move their car to put it where they want it. So it is incredibly impacted. If you'll notice the pictures that were shared by Julia today, you'll notice that all of the surrounding houses have driveways, they have garages. This house has nothing. There is nowhere for these people to park but on the street. And this is not a street with abundant parking. It is so hard. It is so impacted. I think about families in town. You will know who I'm talking about. Where there was an injury to their daughter, their daughter became wheelchair bound. Imagine if they didn't have a garage. Imagine if they were pushing their daughter or carrying their daughter up the street because they had to park a few blocks away because there is no place on their property to park their car. The previous owner who lived in that house, he had back surgery. He was walking up and down the block after back surgery, suffering because he had no place to park his vehicle. So while I understand the concerns about hydrology, I really understand the concerns of these residents. They haven't moved in because it is unsafe for their family. They have two young daughters. Imagine if you went and you driven by, like Cliff said he did, trying to get your kids in and out of the car and you have to physically cross the street in order to do that. The parking is not in front of the property. It is across the street. So when I look at the planning commission's rationale, I have so much respect for them. I think that they do such a good job. Like, I am consistently impressed with our planning commission. And I know that when they approached us, they came from a place of safety. And I also come from a place of safety. Unfortunately, I view this in an opposite manner. So while I really appreciate the hard work that they did, and I support them on almost every decision that they make. This go around, these people have made the modifications, they had made modifications, they tried to change their plan. And I think that we need to honor this appeal and we need to grant them the ability to put it in a garage. For me, this is not the time to change our rules and say, oh, now everyone else is not required to have a hydrology report. But for you, we're going to actually make you jump through all these extra hoops that nobody else has to jump through. That's not fair. If we want to look at hydrology and we want to look at other things that we need to require, that's a separate conversation. But we don't do that to these people who are here, who have checked every box and then some, and say, oh, for you, now we're going to make you do all these extra things. That's not fair. So I'm in full support. I want these people to be able to build their garage. I want to welcome them into town. I want them to be able to raise their daughters here, put them in our local schools, and I want them to feel safe. And I think them being able to build a garage is an integral part of that. That's how I feel.
Well said. I do have some questions for staff unless someone else has questions. Everybody's on mute, so.
I have...
Yes.
I'm sorry. I have one more public comment and the appellant has also indicated that he's also able to address necessary regarding, if it's necessary regarding the soil report and the water overflow. And in terms of the other email, this is again from Prem Lal. The buyer of the house should not have bought a home unsuitable to their needs and cannot blame that fact that they did not, that they did upon the neighbors. They should have known what they were buying and if it was not suitable, should not have made the purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. And City Attorney McMorro, you had a comment to make?
I was simply going to ask whether there were more public questions because there's people hanging on the line to answer questions and I didn't know if there was a public comment or not. But we got our answer. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So I do have a couple of questions of staff. Are there any other variances that apply to this property for the as proposed? Or is the grading review the only variance, or not variance, but the only existing issue?
I'll take that. So there's no other planning permit required for this project. It complies with all of the standards of the R1 district. The grading review is the only discretionary permit required.
Okay, thank you. And the issue of the property extending into the right-of-way and does not affect the ability to do this project?
That's correct. So our regulations regarding expanding non-conforming structures, they say that the new, the new development has to comply with setbacks, lot coverage, floor area, et cetera. The existing structure does not have to be removed. The encroachment doesn't have to be removed with the existing structure.
But they are adding, they are adding a unit in a garage and they are not, there is no setbacks. They are into the public right-of-way?
No, that's, the proposed additions comply with all the required setbacks.
So, and Madam Mayor, if I can, in the 20 years I've been here, there's only been one time where we've required improvements in the public right-of-way to be removed. And that was, you recall the house at the bottom of Samantail Lane in Humboldt, where until we accepted a narrower right-of-way, the kitchen of the home was actually in the public right-of-way. And so in that case, we had the individual remove an exterior garage, which has been an overhang garage. And we accepted a narrower right-of-way and that person then paid for the widening of the road. This would not be the first case I've seen. And there's a handful of them that I could pull up where we find what I would refer to as a minor encroachment into the public right-of-way, whether it's a foot or two feet. And we do not require someone to completely remodel a corner of their house or a front wall of their house to set it completely outside of it.
Okay. And then because while I know we do not have very much leniency in ADUs, while they are building a garage for the parking of the enjoyment of the home, they're going to be bringing more tenants in to an area with no parking. And so that, to me, is sort of a defeatist purpose to having a secondary unit built in an area with no parking and with adding a garage for the benefit of the current residents and adding more residents to that property. So that is an issue for me, as is, you know, widening the street to within, you know, inches of a tree trunk that is going to have an impact to that tree. There's no doubt about it. But those are my comments for the moment. And I welcome any other comments from the council.
Madam Mayor, you know, actually, you brought up a couple of things that have made me want to ask a couple of questions of staff. So one is the tree being close to the curb cut. Are there potential issues with that widening of the road and the roots of the tree? I don't see it with the house, but I potentially see it with the widening of the road.
You want staff to take a shot at that, sir?
Yes, please.
Okay, sure, I have to. So there's always a potential for things to happen. And as we've laid out in the recommendations that I've discussed with planning, we're going to make our best efforts to ensure that doesn't happen, right? So that includes creating a type-three type-protection zone, which is where you put batting around the root of the tree. It's where you do not permit construction, excavation, storage of materials within a diameter of the tree, which is, the number we use is 20 times the radius. So in this case, it would be 22 feet outside the tree, except in the presence of a licensed arborist that's been approved by the city. And then we would require a security deposit for the value of the tree. And then we would require inspections of the tree by said arborist prior construction, post-construction, at the one-year mark and at the three-year mark. So can I guarantee that no harm will befall this tree? No. Can I tell you that we will put forth the best practices in managing construction around the tree? Yes, we'll require that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then how much is the appeal process?
The appeal fee?
Yes, please.
I would defer to the city clerk, not to put her on the spot.
Let me check the receipt.
Is this something we really need to know?
It's 390, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's 390 was paid by the appellant.
Okay. All right. And so if we, the council was to waive that, that they reimburse that, would that have to be part of a motion by the council?
I defer to the city attorney on how we want to handle that.
Yeah, there's a, has it been paid, Ingrid? Do you know? Or John, you're not...
Yes, it has.
Yes, it has been paid.
It's a de minimis amount relative to the city budget, but technically you should just waive it and not repay it so that you should reverse the transaction if that's the will of the council so that there's not new money going from Brisbane. So you're just waiving the pay in circumstances? That's okay.
Okay, so I guess, I'm sure there's probably additional fees that the applicant might have moving forward and they'd just be applied as a credit. Is that what you're suggesting, Tom?
If the council's will is to essentially waive the fee for this appeal, then what I would suggest is the motion directs staff to effectuate that and then leave us, leave it up to staff as to how to do it. There's a technicality that I'm picking up. I don't want to bog you all down there. But we can deal with that as staff.
All right, thank you. So as far as discussion goes, I agree with what Councilwoman Davis laid out on the table. And I would just add that I do think that, I agree that the planning commission, you had good intentions. And then I think that the revision is a better product in the end because we're going to save the one oak tree. But I do think that allowing the applicant to be reimbursed for their yield fee is appropriate. And I would ask that we include that in the motion.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment.
Of course. Go ahead, Councilmember Conley.
Sure. Our public hearing's still open. So, you know, kind of a lot of things. I mean, that you hit on was about the parking. Because even Mr. Wong had thought that there was going to be an on-street parking spot. And I think a few of us thought there was going to be an on-street parking spot that was provided. And I think, even though, I think that's important. So I want to ask the applicant and the engineer if they could accommodate that or be willing to accommodate that to where originally it showed by the stairwell. And is that feasible? You know, I don't know if they're prepared to answer that right at this point. But Madam Mayor, your point was, is that, you know, you're getting the two off-street parking spots, which is important, but you're also adding a second unit. Even though ADUs, you don't have parking, but...
You're getting the two off-street parking spots, which is important, but you're also adding a second unit. You know, ADUs, you don't have parking, but you're getting the two off-street parking spots, which is important.
I'm not able to hear whoever's speaking.
Who's speaking?
You are, Clark.
Now, hold it, hold it. Avery, please turn down your...
I'm not able to hear whoever's speaking.
Avery, please turn down your background. Hold it. Avery, please. Nothing going on? I don't have anything going on here.
Thank you, Clark. You were just getting dual feedback. That was you.
It reverbed on me, yeah.
Okay, time delay.
That was weird.
So I'm not sure that us asking the applicant to come back with a bigger project is appropriate at this time?
I'm not, I'm not asking. I'm just asking if they're willing to provide that on-street parking. That's all.
Well, that would...
Yeah, I thought he was and we thought, we thought he was. And, you know, it just, to me, it seemed kind of...
Well, I'm very uncomfortable with the amount of, the amount of digging of the hillside and the potential for landslide and water runoff.
Well, let me, let me... Can I say, Madam Mayor?
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
So in regards to the right-of-way, building in the right-of-way, years ago, back in the 90s, and I'm going to say the 200 blocks... years ago, back in the 90s, and I'm going to say the 200 block of Kings, which is where I live, but there was a house that had one parking spot on dirt. And the city council did what was called an uphill ordinance at that time. And John, I don't know if you're familiar with that, I mean, you weren't here then, but I don't recall it being rescinded. And we did an ordinance that would allow people to build into the right-of-way a garage. And in this case, it built the two-car garage and also one off-street or on-street parking next to the garage, adjacent to it. So it's actually in the city right-of-way, but if they had to go to their property line, their house is way up on the hill, they would have had to literally excavate under the house, like tunnel in, you know? And so, there was provisions that we allowed for that. Because I always looked, used to look at that house, you know, you know, I grew up looking at that house. And, you know, it, the current house we're talking about right now, 338 Kings, on how they would even be able to provide parking, because they'd never had parking, you know? And, but I just think by adding that, that unit, even though it's an ADU and not a requirement, that, you know, to your point, Madam Mayor, that it seems kind of, well, okay, you know, that it's kind of going to be the same in a sense, right? Is if you get two cars off the street, but two more cars come, it's like it's moot, you know? Even though the street's widened a little bit, so it's still going to be the same parking wars, I think, that Madison referred to. And in regards to the trees, there's absolute no guarantee that the tree be protected. Because that's, I'll be honest with you, I have trees growing up through my house that been here, this house has been here 56 years, you know? And people say, God, how do you get them trees to grow up through there? And when I rebuilt my carports 10 years ago, I had to actually move them back because the trees were just pounding the crap out of the house, right? And so, you know, it's, but the other day, when we had the big windstorm, a huge oak tree across the street from me fell on one of our committee members' house. And I mean, it was, it was bigger than the tree that we're talking about. And, but all intents and purposes, that tree looked very healthy, but it was rotten to the core on the inside. And so, you know, you don't know, there's no guarantees on, you know, what's going to happen with the tree. I had one fall in my front yard, a perfectly looking, healthy oak tree, not the ones on the street level, but on the other side, it just one day just went poop, and a big oak tree. And I looked out there, like, what the heck happened? And I never heard it or anything, you know? So, I mean, you don't know, there's no guarantees when it comes to the trees. I mean, I think our engineers are going to do the best that they can, but there's no guarantees. But my question to the applicant, I still would like to ask the applicant, would they be willing to put on-street parking in that one spot that showed on the plan that the applicant thought or the appellant thought that he was going to? It's a legitimate question, if they're willing to or not. It's not going to change my mind on what it is.
Ask away.
I did. That was my question to him, so.
The applicant's opponent is on the. Hello, everyone, thank you for all the comments. Let me start with the ADU. There's two things about that, but first of all, it's a way to connect the garage to the existing house. We need, we need that second layer to connect. But more importantly, especially for my mother, and I just thought that if it's an ADU, my wife would be happier, but we don't need it to be an ADU. There's some legality of whatever issues, we just need to have the garage built. So we're happy to go without ADU or with the ADU, we just need that space to connect and also have a place for my mother. So we could, we could exclude that or include that, whatever that's necessary, as long as we can pursue this project. And the other thing about the broken, the koi pond, so what happened? Let me explain what happened, because I think this might have triggered this entire thing about hydrology and Frank, Frank were one of the neighbors nearby. He's not happy about this. Let me explain, so there's also filler for the, for the koi pond. So when the water goes below, it'll spill. And for some reason, it gets stopped, and the water kept going. Now, this is another reason we couldn't, so we can actually know that happened, but we're not there yet, so it didn't, we didn't know that it was the whole filling until over the weekend. So it's actually two half-days. And the water department already shut it off, and I think that's why the neighbors that he saw them know on the door, because they already shut off the water. So we really, really appreciate the city for taking care of it. So that's, that's what happened, it's a figure that, that just didn't stop filling the pond. And the thing about hydrology, if you look at attachment success, we knew the, usually neighbors had this concern about the water impact and all that. So we actually contacted the soil engineer to do, to reaffirm their soil report. So they actually, so we actually paid them to do another reaffirmation of the previous report just to make sure that the construction would be safe. And on page two, it's very clear that by adding, by incorporating the existing design plan, the completion of the, of the walls, the foundation, it actually enhances the stability of that, of the slope, and, and to protect the, the house from these possible landslides. So we actually reaffirmed this. We gone through it in a second review to make sure that all the neighbors are happy about that. And one last thing about, there's something about complex, I have no idea what you're talking about. I don't know anything about any complex, I mean, honestly, the only person that we have hired is a, is a gardener who comes to help, and that's probably the only person we're hired. So I'm not sure of anything else out there that, that could have any kind of issue. And lastly, about conditions of approval, we, we will do conditional approvals. That's whatever that's necessary will comply with the city, complying, complying with the city's current regulations so far, and be happy to do whatever that's necessary. And the last thing about the parking, if you lived on that street, you would know. It's a serious problem. And if you saw the original, then we're very happy to do whatever we could to help the parking situation. We were going to add two parking spots on Kings Road. But if you had been to the hearing, it was very, people were very concerned about any kind of improvement. So, so one spot, we wanted to increase the width, because right now, there's two spots there. It's very, it's very tight, and you barely could park. So we were going to extend that just slightly, so it's easier for everyone actually to park, because we're doing construction anyway. And then we're going to excavate another spot for another car to park. And that would really clearly improve that entire street. But apparently, we have these neighbors on other streets or other areas in the town, they don't, they don't know the problems of that street. So they are just against any kind of work. And so, we just say, okay, and that's not do that, we just do whatever minimum possible to make sure that we don't cause any kind of issues that they would be concerned about. So that's why we really significantly scaled down any kind of work that's necessary to improve the area, just do the minimum, minimum. I asked the architect just to do the minimum and minimum to get through with any kind of, any commission review. So my, my understanding is that, because these were kind of widened the other side of the tree, not, not the tree, so we don't want to touch the area, but we're going to extend the other side. Maybe in a phase, if the cities allow us to expand, and we could add one more spot there. But if, if we need to reduce this bulk of work to make sure that there's no damage to anything around the area, then, then we don't need that lot. So just whatever we could, we're more than happy just to move into to get this approved. If there are any other issues, I'll be happy to, to address, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Let's make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, there is another email message that I received.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if you could close the public hearing to prevent further comment and then take this email, that's perfectly permissible.
Thank you. As long as it's not from somebody.
It is from somebody that's already commented.
Does it exceed the five minutes?
No, it won't exceed the five minutes. These are quotes from the 2020 Engineers Report for Stormwater Management Fees, which I assume was written by Mr. Randy Bro. I would appreciate it if he would related, if he would related these paragraphs to 338 Kings and the 42,754 gallons of water, which would no longer be absorbed by the property after the removal of 357 cubic yards of soil. Quote, "If this stormwater is not properly managed, flooding may result. Often municipal drainage systems are designed for flows resulting from pre-development runoff and become undersized when impervious area is increased by building structures, driveways, and parking lots. Further, increased stormwater runoff makes areas not covered by impervious materials more susceptible to erosion. As a result, sediment may discharge the storm drain system." Thank you.
And may I ask, who's that from?
I'm sorry, that's from Trem Law.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we close the public hearing.
You did not act on the motion, was there a motion?
I made. There was a motion, but there was no vote on the public, closing the public hearing. So roll call vote to close the public hearing, please. Ingrid, a roll call vote to close the public hearing.
Sure. Councilmember Conley?
I didn't hear you.
She asked if you approved to close the public hearing.
Aye, I didn't hear her. You're muted, Madison.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So is there any further discussion among the council members?
Well, yeah, I'm just, you know, Mr. Wong said he's willing to provide on, an on-street parking spot.
Okay, if we're going to get into this, we need to take a 10-minute break, okay? So if we want to change the parameters of the appeal, then I think that we need to take a break, because it's not going to go quick.
Okay, take a break.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'll mute everybody.
Of September 3rd, and I would like to get an opinion from Tom if we can change this appeal to have other discussions.
Do not... I would have to actually research it. I've never seen this before, but I... Just based on what I do know, I do not think you can change the parameters of the appeal.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So that would be something for another meeting with another agenda item if there was a request to change the parameters of this permit and the appeal process.
Let me be clear. So the appeal is the appeal. Whether you rule on it tonight or another night is up to the council. But what is being appealed is what was noticed, and acting on that appeal is what the law requires. If there's some other additional criteria that's being addressed outside of the appeal or separately, yes, Madam Mayor, I think that if you're contemplating that, it needs to be noticed. Clay, Stuart, Randy, John, if you see something different, let me know, but I've never seen going outside of the actual appeal process. Sorry, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So moving forward, is... Clay, you were in... Excuse me. Clark, you were in discussion of what you wanted to see from this.
Yeah. Is, you know, about the feasibility of another parking spot, and probably best to ask the city engineer, you know, because the applicant is willing to do it, is it feasible? And Randy, I don't know if you're prepared to answer that, if you're there.
Yes, sir. I think with some engineering, if the applicant is willing and interested in offering to you that they would provide a new on-street parking space in the public right-of-way that is in addition to the existing parking spaces in the public right-of-way, I believe it could be done.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm bouncing between applicant and appellant. He's... You may stop being an appellant and go back to being an applicant at some point.
Okay. So, that being said, Tom, is that something that during the appeal process, can we just say the applicant, if you put that in, or what?
You can... If the council so agrees, it's germane to the... To what's before the council. So can you say that the council is upholding the appeal subject to this because this was our understanding going into the appeal? Yes, you can do that. But if you're going to go outside of what the understanding was and what was publicly noted, no. I understand here, there is a misunderstanding about whether that spot is there or not. So, yes, you can deal with that. That's germane. But I would not go beyond that. You can't go outside what had been understood coming into this appeal or was noticed in the public.
Yeah, I mean, okay.
The spot, I do understand. It seems clear to me. I looked at it again while the debate was going on. It's pretty clear that there is a... There was an understanding was there, so I think that's germane. I'm just cautioning on not going outside something that's not been before the city or the council or the commission.
I would say a misunderstanding on how we read the documents when the documents were obviously correct in what the original paperwork before us and the paperwork before the council or the planning commission was. I think that extends beyond the... What any person reading this document and going through the process would have understood. So I don't think it's something that we should address at this point. If you'd like to make a comment that you would like to see parking in this project, that's certainly something you could express, and the applicant could come back with that report and the supporting documents for it. So that would be my opinion of where we're heading with in this meeting.
Yeah, if I may, Madam Mayor, I agree with you. You know, obviously in the letter, the applicant misunderstood. He thought, you know, land was in his right-of-way, and obviously it was not. You know, adding an additional requirement or kind of suggesting to do it, I mean, which, yeah, we're not saying do it. We're saying, you know, we're making a suggestion. Yeah, I don't think it's fair. And also talking about the ADU, and the applicant said, well, maybe I'll seek back the ADU. You know, the ADU is... That's something that he's allowed to do. He's put it for as, you know, part of his project. He's not required to provide the off-street parking or the on-street parking or any parking, actually, for that unit. So... And they followed the letter of the law. So I'm good with, you know, Mr. Hong, if you want to do the ADU, by all means. If by chance, you know, having an on-street parking spot benefits your enjoyment of your home, you know, with, you know, providing that spot for, you know, someone from your home, from your family or a guest, you know, okay, work with the staff and do that. But by no means don't feel pressured that you have to make changes because of asking for something in addition. That's on that.
And the drawing, the drawings, three of us were pretty confused about that, too. Because, you know, I mean, that was an eye chart. So in the future, you know, we need bigger drawings. My future is very short. But, you know, I'm just saying, you know, coming across that, that that was confusing the three of us. And I thought that that was being provided, okay? So the applicant's willing to provide it, then yeah, work with staff. I'm good with that, you know, and I'm willing to pass the project. But I think it'd be a disservice to our city if something isn't provided off-street, even though it's all within the parameters, and I'm sure he wants to be a good citizen and do this stuff, and it's all within the legalities, and I'm good with that, too. I understood it. But three of us understood, at least the other two didn't comment on it, that we thought that there was an on-street parking spot that was being provided when really it wasn't. And so that was confusing. Because, I don't know about you, but I couldn't see the dates, even with my cheaters on, so... And Cliff, you could...
I ran.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
I'm curious as to how, because when I read it, I understood that during the second iteration, that parking spot was gone. I'm curious, because Julia, you said it wasn't in relationship to the tree being there or not being there. And I know you touched on this earlier, but if you could just clarify, like, why was this spot taken out?
So the additional on-street spaces were eliminated because they changed their project to reduce the size of the additions to the main house. So they were not required to provide four spaces. So, and as the applicant noted, there was some public comment about the additional excavation in the right-of-way to provide those spaces as well. But it's because the project changed.
So if he's gonna go out of his way to make the on-street, then that may result in him then saying, okay, well, I'd like to go back to my initial enhancements because now I'm putting in the effort to make an on-street spot. I would like to proceed with what I had originally wanted to do. I mean, I would...
If I may, I think Councilmember Lance, you have much better way of explaining this. An appeal is not a negotiation. So I... The only reason I said on the property question on the parking spot is I went and looked myself, and it is susceptible to two meetings. But no, this is not a... If this appeal stands and he moves forward, he moves forward on the basis of what's in the planning, the planning decision that was appealed. If he wants to file a new plan with a changed project, that'll be a new plan with a changed project. So I don't want to make this sound like it's a negotiation where he gets to vary his plan because the council asked him to address one clarification, one, the parking spot. And when you read it, it is susceptible of the meetings, both meetings.
So I'd like to make a motion if we're done discussing.
I haven't said anything yet.
Oh.
So, you know, I've got to agree with Madison Davis that it would be... Councilmember Davis, that it would be really great to get these people moving along and get them into their home and be done with all of this. I also agree with Councilmember Lance that we should reverse the charges on this. And after spending seven years on the planning commission, I know how many times the pressure is on and the public can be so strong in their conviction about what they think is right, even if it doesn't hold up with the information that you have in front of you. That there's emotional responses in our community has been forever about any new project that comes along. So that's really all I wanted to say. And so I have a question for Tom. Does this now just become an administrative item if we've got this confusion relative to the parking spot or not parking spot?
I think the appeal needs to be as disclosed, and there is a lack of clarity. And so if the council wants to put in a motion, the appeal is X, subject to staff clarifying that parking will be provided, or subject to staff clarifying that parking will not be provided. And leave that with staff, that's fine, because that's what's lacking in the spot.
Okay. So I'm done with my questions. Back to you, Councilmember Davis, for your motion.
Harry, are you right... Are you okay if I make a motion?
You're welcome to make a motion.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion approving the appeal of 338 Kings Road. And would like staff to work with the appellant regarding clarifying the on-street parking. Do I... Can I add the waiver of the appeal fee now, or is that a separate?
I would just include it in this motion. It's fine.
And would like to ask city staff to waive the appeal fee for the appellant. Is that okay? Or do I need even a few more?
I think that's good.
Okay.
But the waive the appeal fee period, no other costs.
Period.
All right, I'll say it again.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
I feel bad for dissenting with the group, but I am going to vote now. And I believe that our planning commission did a very good job. They are always required to find a legal reason for their decisions that they make. And sometimes their hands are tied on what those decisions can be. We, as a council, can make the decision that we want to with a lot more discretion than finding a legal finding for the approval or denial. And I just wanted to put that out there with that vote to not uphold the appeal. But thank you all, because this has been an interesting read and an interesting road to go down. But thank you all. Roll call vote. I guess we've done that, so we will move on. Let me find my agenda again.
Madam Mayor, just so you know, my computer is dying. I have it plugged in, but I'm sitting on the floor, so I don't know. I may end up dying and then have to phone in on my phone. So, just so, if all of a sudden I go boop, you know...
If you go dark, we'll know why, and we'll expect your coming back in as soon as possible. If you go dark, we'll know why and we'll expect your rich, your, uh, coming back in as soon as possible. And I appreciate that warning. I'm plugged in and I'm just barely holding even.
All right, you got it, eight percent plugged in.
So this is going to bring us to old business. Consider adoption of ordinance six five four, waiving second reading, authorizing amendment to the contract between the City of Brisbane and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System. Staff report, please.
Yes, this is an item that you had seen a number of times previously. It's part of the MOU. This is allowing the firefighters to cost share the employer portion of the PERS that over time they will be paying an additional three percent in their PERS. This is an administrative requirement by PERS to have this done by an ordinance.
And I understand that we have a comment on this, um, from a member of the public.
Um, I did not receive that comment.
Oh, I thought you had said that we had that. Maybe that was on item O and I'm looking at the here.
Yeah, that was for O.
Okay, so are there any members of the public that are, um, online or absent for discussion on this item?
There are no members of the public wishing to comment.
Okay, thank you, um. Any comments from council?
I have none.
Motion to approve.
Oh, Karen says she has a.
No, I said I have none, sorry.
Oh, I thought you said you have one, okay. Okay, so a motion to approve by Councilmember Conway and a second from Councilmember Lance. So roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye, thank you. That brings us to item R, which is consider approval of funding of the 400 Kings Road Slope Stability Plans Project from the General Fund in the amount of $250,000. Staff report, please.
Randy?
Do we have a staff report?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to put a motion on the table while we're waiting, because, uh, a motion to approve it.
Um, I think we need to ask for discussion first. Um, I think we all know that this is the, um, repair of, of the slide that's on the 400 Kings Road. And one of the reasons that I'm sort of not real thrilled with the amount of grading on the other project that we just discussed, um, because I know that the area is unstable. Um, so with that, you, we have a motion on the table. Any comments from the council? Saying no takers, do I have a second?
What, excuse me, Madam Mayor, Ms. Padilla, was there any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you.
Seconded. Okay, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Number Lynn?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye, thank you. That brings us to new business, item S. Do we have a staff report on this one?
Yes, um, this is in recognition of COVID and a number of the nonprofits in town are not able to run their normal fundraisers. The city council has in the past set aside approximately $26,000 for co-sponsorships of these types of events. Since we're not able to co-sponsor that, staff thought that it may be appropriate to use about $10,000 at this point in time to help nonprofits to cover some of their anticipated revenues from previous events that got canceled due to COVID. Um, what we would anticipate is if we, all of the, if we spend no money for the co-sponsorships this year, that we would allow the, we would try and assist the nonprofits in town with the full amount of the co-sponsorship money that we set aside.
Okay, council, this, council discussion, questions for staff?
Good idea.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. You know, Stuart, I got, this is a quick question, quick clarification. So, um, 26K is what council set aside in the budget for co-sponsorship. And, and have, have we spent any of that money yet?
Not for this fiscal year, no.
Not for this fiscal year. So we're going to put up the 10K and then, um, say we're still kind of in this kind of situation. You're recommending that we just put in the additional 16K and, um, spend the, the, the full amount that we budgeted.
Right, and what we would do is we'd have the, the nonprofits submit to us what they would normally make during their, we do is a portion of the $10,000 proportionally amongst the different nonprofits. And then if we have, if we have more money available later in the year, we'll portion the additional money.
Okay, yeah, no, I think that's an excellent idea. Uh, yeah, you know, I like to make a motion on that, um, after we have the rest of the.
There any other comments from, from council members?
No, it sounds good to me too.
And then do we have any members of the staff, I mean, of the public that have put in comments on this?
No members of the public wish to speak on this item.
I'll second this motion.
Okay, and I, I, I just want to say, I think it's being prudent to wait and see because maybe we will be able to have some events this fiscal year.
That'll be good.
So.
In a perfect world, and we need to look at finances. So I think the $10,000 is great. So, uh, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye, thank you. That brings us to the city manager's report on upcoming activities.
Okay, we're going to have a, um, something to put on the screen, uh, Ingrid.
Let me put up your slide.
Yeah.
Didn't even know you were around, Clay.
I'm here, I was here the whole time, riveted. Okay, so I'll try to make this fairly, uh, quick. I know the hour is late, we're all getting a little, little tired.
A little punchy.
Yeah, a little punchy. So, um, back in June, the city council adopted your short-term rental urgency ordinance. Um, we, um, in that ordinance, uh, we required, um, the short-term rentals to get a permit by September 16th. Uh, those are for hosted, um, um, locations by the property owners, um, and single-family dwelling units. Uh, the store, city ordinance regulates that, um, short-term rentals are for 30 days or less. Um, get the next slide up. Um, we did some, um, advertising for this on, uh, June 19th. Again, on August 7th and August 14th, uh, Friday afternoon blast. Uh, we did, uh, uh, application in the web form base on the webpage that was put up on, uh, July 22nd, um, featuring guidebook and frequently asked questions. Uh, we emailed to, um, Stur subscriber list that was sent out on July 24th, uh, to 110 residents in town who've advertised on Facebook, Instagram, Channel 7, signboard posts in early August, um, and additional promotion will be done in this month of, uh, September. Um, to date, uh, we've only had one, um, application that was not, um, sponsored to the program, um, being a, uh, ADU. So we do not have any current applications that might possibly be approved. Um, after September 16th, um, the city may commence, uh, enforcement against hosts operating without a permit, um, which would, uh, at the moment be anybody who was operating a short-term rental since there are no, um, are no permits at the moment. Um, staff is discussing contracting with a host compliance and assist, to assist in enforce, enforcement efforts. Get the next slide. Um, we, uh, they should, would be able to, um, help us with the address identification. We have, um, 43 rental listings that we've noted as of July 20, uh, 2020. They could do compliance monitoring, um, mobile enabled registration and tax collection, 24/7 hot, host hotline, uh, or web form. Um, and the cost is relatively small, around $10,500 a year. Um, so that's kind of where we're at, at the moment with, uh, with the program. We'll continue to advertise, um, depending on what sort of, uh, enrollment we get and what sort of issues we may run into after September 16th. Um, you know, we'll always do our best to try to educate first and cite second. Um, and, um, uh, believing that most of the people who, uh, have, uh, short-term rentals, um, are trying to do it in a responsible way. And for the most part, we don't get complaints about most of the, 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 uh, operations. Um, but as we know, we have had a couple of areas that have been problematic. So that's the status on that. Um, just a reminder, uh, to the community, um, to, uh, sign up for SMC Alert. It's Amocayo County Alert System. Um, and, uh, you can get, uh, text messages on things that are happening locally. Um, relative to roads, uh, fires, um, et cetera. Um, the last we looked at this, we had, um, I can't remember the exact number, but it was fairly small number of people who are still signed up for SMC Alert, which is a little surprising given everything that's going on. So we'll continue to advertise for this. We certainly encourage people. It's the best and quickest way to find out, uh, in an emergency what, uh, what is going on. And I think that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Clay. Um, I, I'm sort of surprised that we've had no applications for the short-term rentals. Um, we obviously know that there's quite a few people who have those. And to find out that none are interested in participating is a little saddening to, um, them as hosts, um, feeling that it doesn't apply to them. And I, and I think that we need to really get it out there that it will apply to them and see if we can get voluntary compliance some way. Um, and hiring a company to administer our short-term rentals when we allegedly have none is, um, an oddity to me, an oddity. So I hope there's some way we can put it out, um, in some sort of, and I've seen it on the signboard, so I know that we have been trying to educate our residents about the new law. But I hope there's some way we can get this out to the people that we know are hosting and, um, let them know that they will be in violation. Um, and that does have consequences and it can only do good for the community to register, um, and be one of the people that is in compliance. So I hope that's something we can do.
I agree.
With that, um, we'll move on to Mayor and Councilmember. Go ahead, yes.
Um, just want to put in a plug for the OSEC Recycled Arts and Crafts Contest. Deadline is October 15th to apply. There's more information on the city's website. Um, sounds really cool. It's going to be virtual, so you create something out of stuff that would normally be trashed. And then you're going to take a picture and then a committee will, um, decide who the winners are. And I believe there are prizes, um, sponsored by scavengers. And I hear they're good prizes. I don't know what they are, but I hear they're good. And the other thing is that everyone needs to take the census. Like, there's some weird stuff happening where all of a sudden all of these enumerators got laid off at the last second and are being redirected to other areas. But I believe that for every person that doesn't fill out the census, that's $10,000 that our county doesn't receive. And I believe that for every 10% of uncounted people, it's something like $70 million that our county doesn't receive. And that is a huge impact to us. So if you haven't taken the census, please do. It's really easy, you can just go online and fill it out. It takes less than five minutes and you're doing your part. And think about, you know, the future generations, no one ever talks about this, but the future generations that might want to look you up and they won't be able to find you on Ancestry because you weren't counted in the census. So do it for the future generations who might want to learn a little bit about who you were and their family history. So get counted in the census.
Of course, that information will not be made public for 63 years.
Until you die, but.
Keep that in mind, it's private for 63 years.
They want to find out about you. Get.
Yes, okay, so city council ad hoc subcommittee on equity, diversity and inclusion. Hmm, I'm not sure who's having that report, but.
Uh, Madison, this was your item?
Oh, it's my item.
Yeah.
Okay, I think it is my item. Um, so I was approached by a number of different leaders in the community, um, really, you know, well-known community members asking me like, what, what can we do as a city to help further inclusion on our commissions and committees and diversity? And what are we doing as a city internally with our hiring processes? And, um, these people are really wanting to be a part of this discussion and trying to investigate, you know, ways that we can improve as a city on these issues. And so we thought that the best way to tackle some of those things was maybe to establish a subcommittee where we could review like hiring policies. We could review ways that we could encourage more people to, to apply for our commissions and committees. So there's more representation of different, um, races and ages. And, um, so I wanted to propose that subcommittee and see if there is a, um, if it's a pleasure of the council for us to start looking at some of those things.
Sounds good to me.
Yes, highly recommend, uh, having that ad hoc committee.
So obviously I'm on it. I don't know who would want to be on it with me, but I will be on it.
So I think in light of the upcoming elections and that the reorganization of our subcommittees when that election happens, um, when we come back after that election, we'll be able to see who has what duties and who is open for more duties. So I would like to shelve this subcommittee until the start of our next year where we know who will be ongoing on that subcommittee.
Yeah, you're going to have a new person, load them up.
That will, and, you know, we all have a lot of subcommittees. So it may be something that if the council's amenable, it doesn't need to be council-driven. Um, and it may not need two council members. Um, it may be, you know, volunteer or public initiated type of thing. So I think we should address that once we have the new council seated.
Sounds good.
Madam Mayor, just, just, uh, to get everybody up to speed a little bit, um, and I'll be very brief about this. So we have, um, formed an internal, um, equity committee within, uh, city staff that's made up of, um, at least one member of each city department and they're working on a number of issues. The, um, recruitment pros, um, uh, programs, I think, uh, are, are one, but just one of many things that they're, they're working on. And I think when I had talked to Madison, I had suggested that the, uh, um, you know, it would be great for the committee to be able to kind of report out maybe to a subcommittee, um, and ultimately to the full council on the things we're kind of looking at internally, which have both an internal focus as well as an external focus. So just wanted you to be aware that that's already kind of in place and, uh, in moving along. So just wanted you to be aware that that's already kind of in place and, uh, in moving along internally.
Great. I think that's, that's a good take on it and a good start. Um, so then that moves us to, um, council commissions and committees recruitment update. And I think this is going to be Clay.
Um, well, I'll start, uh, and then Ingrid can kind of fill in. So you, we had not, um, or I mean, we, we have, uh, a number of positions that are open. Um, we were waiting to set dates to do, uh, interviews. Um, I know that when I had talked, uh, previously to Madison about, uh, I don't you, uh, the thought was to, um, to maybe hold off on the, the appointments until, uh, there could be more recruitment or, um, or another round of recruitment for boards and commissions. But so to, if you're gonna be putting that off into the next year, you may want to go ahead and set, um, a time for, uh, interviews. And if you want to, then, uh, the city clerk can, uh, assist in trying to find dates to, to do that. Um, that's kind of more or less your call at this point.
Well, I, I will say, and I will take other people's, uh, opinions on this. I think that because the council commissions and committees do sit at the council's pleasure, it also might be best to wait until the election, which is, you know, two months away. And very important, um, to steep those, do the, do the heavier, um, interviews. We certainly can put it out there, but I would think that, um, these elections may change how people look at, at, um, serving on committees and commissions. And, um, so we're already this far. I don't think two months a big difference is going to make in this time of COVID. But, um, I'll be happy to take other comments.
Yeah, if I may, Madam Mayor, um, I, I know of two, uh, park and rec commissioners. They keep serving because, you know, no one has replaced them. But they decided not to pony back up because they want to move on. And they just don't want to, like, just not show up. And, uh, yes, COVID has put a, you know, a, a, a kink in, in our interviews. But, you know, now we know how to do, uh, Zoom interviews very well. And, um, you know, just kicking the can down the road. I mean, it'll be well over a year since we, I think, first went down this path of, of interviewing new people. And, and, and I, and then I have, but there, there are folks who talk to me who, who are not on, uh, a committee or commission, but they've applied and it's like, hey, what, what's up with you guys? So I think, yeah, I think we should just do it. And then if there are new, uh, positions that open up, then, uh, we'll, we'll, um, have interviews for those new positions. But I, I, I think we should do it as soon as possible.
Okay, um, you know, I just felt that it may make it, I mean, it's, and it's not so much any positions opening up that would make the difference. It's the people coming in, having an opportunity to weigh in on, on, or the people on the council weighing in on who, uh, serves with them. So, okay, I mean, certainly we can do whatever staff can get done for us. And it looks like Ingrid has paper on the board.
Madam Mayor, um, if I, if I may speak on that, cause, um, I'm, I'm gone in a couple of months. And, uh, I think, uh, you're gonna have a new council person. I think you ought to give them the opportunity to, uh, um, do the interviews. You know what I mean?
I agree. I agree with Terry and Clark.
All right, whatever. Uh, I'm just giving you guys feedback. You know, from people who have applied, the people who are on it, they'd like it to be done sooner than later. But if that's the pleasure of the rest of the council to just, you know, to delay it until we get a new council member, uh, because, or, or a new council, I should say, um, then, then, then so be it. But I, what I, if we're gonna do that, right, let's, let's just like have that date, that, you know, not too long after the election. So that we, we just, let's just set it up, right? Because we've waited way too long and, and, and that's not cool, what, what we've done, you know, in my personal opinion.
Yeah, a lot of that though, Cliff, was due to COVID, man.
I know, dude, and we could do, we could have Zoom meeting, right? We could have, we could have done, you know, the interviews a couple of months ago, perhaps, or whatever. But, you know, um, it is what it is. So let's, you know, let's, let's, let's put the, the date in, in, in the, uh, you know, on the record as soon as possible. That's all I'm saying.
I can agree with that. I mean, my, uh, my schedule's pretty open at this point.
So are we, are we allowing other people to apply since the deadline is like some, like two months away? Are we gonna allow that? Because.
Uh, that, that's a choice of yours. You, we could reopen for these spots or we could just go with the, the applicants as you have them right now.
I would like to have it open again.
Okay, we could, we could re, yeah, well, I guess that kind of begs the question, do you want to wait until after the election to do that? I mean, looking at the list, you actually have, you know, at least one council candidate on that list of applicants, so.
Actually two, actually two. There's two.
For the planning commission.
Stand corrected.
So Clay, so, yeah, so Clay, if we did that, if we, if we, if we wait until after the election and then we host it again, we would then what, have like another two months of like bringing, you know, allowing people to come in and, and apply?
Well, I think, you know, and Ingrid, you can help me here, but I mean, I think if we, if we started to, uh, advertise in November and did November, December, and then, um, filing deadline, let's say, you know, middle of January, then, um, then you could do your interviews maybe by the end of January.
Why can't we just open it now?
Well, you can, and just, I'm saying you've got, you know, it, it, there's, you do have a couple of people who are, you know, planning commission that are council candidates.
Because we're gonna have the holidays, so we're not gonna be back until mid-January anyway.
Right. I mean, I think, I think if we did the advertising in post-election through the holidays and then you did your interviews at the end of January, that would, you know, granted, we missed a year. But if you put that aside, that's a more normal schedule.
Um, are, is the park and rec commission still meeting?
Yes.
So are, on some of these committees, like, are, would they still have a quorum if, like, the people who no longer want to serve did, decided not to?
Well, if they've decided not to, now, I, I believe we, I think everybody's continuing to serve with the exception of one person on OSEC who actually gave their resignation.
There's two people on planning or on park and rec, at least, maybe three that didn't reapply.
Right, but they continue to serve until you replace them.
Yeah, but if they just, like, the comment from Cliff was that some of those people, like, are still serving but don't really want to be serving, they're doing it so that they're not leaving the commission high and dry. So would there still be a quorum though, if some of them decided? Cause like, one of those people is running for office, so another office. And so if they are elected, they may not want to hold both until you, until we appoint somebody to fill their spot. So can some of these, are some of these still operational without those people serving?
For parks and recreation, it's, the city council said it's between five to seven members. So if you look at it as having five, if you, if they, if you accept the resignations and they're down to five members, you would still then be able to have a quorum of the five.
Or three.
Yeah, four on with three.
Right. So if you were to accept the resignation of the people who resigned, we would still be able to have a quorum, um, you know, we'd still be able to do that because we'd, we'd have a quorum of, of three of the five.
Right. Okay.
So I think that we should direct, um, staff to do a doodle poll with dates that we are available and in the very first part of the year and to do outreach for the open seats. Um, people can always withdraw their application. Um, but I think we should, we should get that going at the earliest part of the year as we can.
So ju- just, just to be clear, so we'll, we'll start the, um, recruitment process in November and we'll do interviews in January?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that'd be good.
Okay, now we're getting brain fog. Can I make a suggestion that, uh, that we skip the subcommittee reports, Madam Mayor, in light of the hour?
I, unless someone has something really important, we can skip, um, that. But I do think we need to do the designation of voting delegates for the League of California Cities.
I'd like to suggest Mayor and Vice Mayor.
That's usually who does it.
Mayor and Mayor Proton.
Yeah, that works for me.
If those people are going to the Zoom meeting.
Yeah, currently it's a virtual conference for October 7th through the night.
Yeah, I think we could, we can do that if, um, and we'll see who's, who that will be. That would be me and Karen, I guess, so.
Yes.
Yeah. If you were to appoint a third designee, neither one of you can make it, then we could do that too, right?
Sure. Is, is anyone else interested in doing that?
No, is the answer. I can see it. It's you and me, Derek.
Okay, come on, back up. One of you, Madison or, or, uh?
Come on, Cliff.
Yeah, Clark, I have part to it, it'll be his.
I physically went last year, so.
You have no interest? Okay, well, I don't think, well, any of us are going physically this year. So let's just, we'll leave it at two, and if we have to change it, we have time.
Okay, we'll be good.
We'll be there for voting.
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna skip the countywide assignments and go to the city meet, uh, city council meeting schedule.
Nothing has changed from the last time you've, uh, you've looked at this. The only, um, uh, thing that we did want to tie down is the.
Can, can we both put it online? I, I'm not seeing anything.
It should be on your screen.
See the screen?
He's on his phone, I think. Because his computer was dying.
It's not on there.
We're posted online, but we have the new library dedication.
Oh, there it is. I got it, I got it, I got it.
Yeah, so the library.
That'll be 10/17.
Yeah, 17th or the 24th. So if there's a preference, we can aim for, for that. Um, we're tying down all the details, uh, for that. It'll be, um, we'll, we'll try to get you a, a, um, tour of the facility when it's, um, um, kind of ready. Uh, we're obviously, uh, after all these years, it's kind of ironic that we're gonna have the library, but we're not gonna actually be able to open it to the public. So, um, we're gonna be trying to do some virtual stuff and do some to the members. Um, but we'll also have kind of a, a virtual, um, opening and celebration. Uh, so we're gonna make, make do and do the best we can, uh, under the circumstances.
Either day works for me, so whatever works for the city.
Okay. We'll, we'll get back, if you can, if you could tie down both of those Saturdays, we'd appreciate it.
I, I have one question about when's the council rotation? Is that the 3rd or the 7th? Probably the 17th, huh? Cause I don't think the election will be certified by the 3rd.
Um, well, you know what, we haven't changed, you know, what we have been doing in recent years is not having those dates, but having December, what would be December 10th. Um, so we, we'll look at that. So we may just do, do that, Clark, and then by the 10th, I think we would have.
Let's plan on the 10th. Um, with that, it brings us to oral communications, number two. Are there any members of the public who have commented or who are waiting to comment?
No members of the public wish to comment at this time.
Thank you. And with that, it brings us to adjournment. And I would like to, uh, hand this over to Mayor Broton Cunningham.
Thank you, um, Mayor O'Connell. Um, we would like to, um, adjourn and close this meeting in memory of Rob O'Connell, uh, Dan Hayes, Robert Colby Kaidler, and Gary Stockton. And with that, I would like to adjourn the meeting to September 17th. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, a- all our love, Gary.
Thank you. And we need a roll call vote for that.
One second.
Councilmember Conway?
Aye.
Member Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job, Terry. Good job. Terry in the meeting tonight. It's excellent.
It was, it was a tough one.
Appreciate you. Yeah, that was difficult. That was difficult, yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, take care, everyone. Have a good, uh, Labor Day weekend.
Good night.
All right, bye-bye.